Okay, you're all set. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the September 17th, 2020 Town Council Meeting. And if you could hear us, I'd be advised that right now Channel 18 is not available. You could go to our website and see it streaming on the town website. We're sorry for that inconvenience. We'll try to get it repaired as soon as possible. I must ask, in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Thank you very, very much. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselors. Bogan.
President.
Clark.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Dag one. Rap Gressetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Lebeck.
Present.
Neary.
Present.
Snap.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
And Stein Hilber.
Here.
Thank you. Twelve present.
And thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If we could please stand, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If we could now have a moment of silence, and I would ask Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, I'd like to take this moment of silence to reflect on the life and contribution of our friend Elizabeth Mumford and her family, a resident of Hyannis Port and an artist and historian who lost her battle with cancer this last week on September 13th. Our thoughts are with her family, and her paintings of our beautiful town will live on forever, and we're very thankful for her contribution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We would now open for public comment. Sorry, do you have anybody for public comment?
Yes, I do. Give me one second.
Thank you. And Lynn, are you with us?
Yes, I am, and we have no public comment via phone at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. And you're aware of technical problems, right?
Yes, working to address them.
Thank you so much, Lynn.
First up for public comment is Mr. Wrightson. Mr. Wrightson, now's your chance to speak at public comment. Please unmute your microphone.
Thank you very much. Thank you, President Hebert. I'm Frederick Wrightson. My wife and I have lived in the town of Barnstable since 1974. During the September 14th public comment portion of the planning board meeting, Mr. Christian Teague spoke in support of the existing proposed zoning amendments, mentioning, among other things, that there was a perception of investors dominating the STR market, crime associated with the STRs, no ease in wild parties, prostitution, and even gunslinging. Mr. Teague claimed that because there were no pictures or news articles, that this was false information. If people haven't heard about them because the town does not release the info about these issues and the press doesn't report them, so the answer is yes to Mr. Teague's version of the claims of opponents. It happens at STRs here, and as I said, it goes unreported to the public. I'm aware of the circumstances Mr. Teague suggests people are fabricating. I believe that Mr. Teague is wrong in all of his accusations. In a previous town meeting, one councilor was even said that citizens who call out these issues are fear mongering. Citizens that bring these issues to your attention are not fear mongering. They're trying to protect their neighborhoods, their children, from these very real dangers. So I'd like to mention just two major events: a shooting and a huge party. First, a shooting. There have been numerous shootings at the Airbnb STRs. Just Google "Airbnb shooting", and you'll be flooded with results. They happen at the rate of about six per month nationally and are widely reported. Last year, a shooting that left five people dead made national news, sparked lawsuits, and put Airbnb into damage control mode. The company paid for funerals and conceded some rentals are "high risk". Massachusetts has had a number of Airbnb shootings: Jamaica Plain, Lynn Fields, and one that no one here appears to want to talk about: Hyannis. A young man was shot at 64 German Drive in Hyannis, Dumont Drive. Five mass men fled into the residential neighborhoods surrounding South and C Streets. A wide area lockdown for hours while police did a manhunt. Giving citizens full information about that crime might have helped the police. A full account of that event is only available on live audio feed of a police radio scanner. The rest of the information you can find on airbnb.com and the town's public records. Many Barnstable residents have heard about the Hyannis Airbnb shooting and are asking question: Who in the town government knew about this? Why? When did they know it? Why has it been kept quiet? And has the committee proposing the change to zoning to allow Airbnb everywhere discussed this? Why hasn't it been in the papers? The public deserves to know. And second, the party. In the village of Osterville, someone rented a house one weekend and then sold tickets on social media for a party at the house. They had a bouncer at the driveway entrance to collect tickets or cash for entry. One of my friends lives in Starboard Lane, which is where the party was, and said that there were more than 100 cars parked on the neighborhood lane. The police were called, and after arriving, they locked down the lane and began breaking up the party. I heard the story from three different sources who live on or at the Abudding Street. Did we read about this in the local paper or hear it reported on local radio? No. Has the town discussed or investigated this incident in their deliberations on STRs? In a public meeting, the town has admitted that it can't predict the effect of its STR and zoning change proposal. It admitted that it doesn't know what our committee will be like in one, three, or five years after implementation of these changes. Why aren't these things reported here so that people have the facts? It's only our safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wrightson, for calling in. We really appreciate it, and we take your comments seriously. Thank you.
Next up for public comment is Rob Wilson. Rob, now's your time to speak.
Hi, yes, hi. My name's Rob Wilson. I live in Martins Mills. I just wanted to urge support of passing one of the items down the agenda about the Green Community. I think it's time Barnstable got with the rest of Massachusetts. That's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, thank you very much for calling in. We appreciate it.
Up next is Michelle, and I'm not going to try to butcher your last name. If you'd like to unmute, you can speak now.
Michelle.
Michelle. Michelle, you need to unmute. We can't hear you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Michelle Scarlett, and I'm a resident of Centerville. I am a member of the Barnstable Climate Action Network. We are a part of a Capewide effort where all 15 towns are declaring a climate emergency and working to pass this declaration at town meetings. We are asking the Barnstable Town Council to place it on the agenda for discussion. The currently proposed Barnstable Climate Emergency Policy states, "The town of Barnstable recognizes that we confront a climate emergency, which is driven by human energy consumption and land use practices. Global climate change, rising seas, deadly storms, dangerous heat waves, acidifying oceans, and melting ice sheets all pose imminent threats to the health, safety, and economic security of the residents of Barnstable. The town of Barnstable therefore adopts as its policy the objective of reducing net greenhouse gas emissions from human activity within and by the town to zero at the earliest technically and economically feasible time. The town manager will direct that all officers and departments of the town will take such measures within the scope of their respective responsibilities and authority as may be necessary and prudent to facilitate such policy and objective. The Barnstable Climate Emergency Policy acknowledges that the Cape is under threat from rising seas, bigger and more frequent storms, flooding, shifting habitats, ocean acidification, rising temperatures, and economic disruptions. We are at ground zero for some of the most severe impacts from climate change. The Climate Emergency Policy is an acknowledgement of current scientific knowledge and local experience. Human activity is changing our climate, and urgent action is needed now. We need to bring carbon emissions down to zero as fast as possible. While Barnstable has been proactive in many areas, the latest research indicates that a broad, coordinated effort to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 may represent the world's last chance for preventing the worst effects of climate change. All town decisions should be made through the lens of how we can reduce our use of fossil fuels. These future planning strategies can inspire and be models for all residents in town. This focus will strengthen our economy and make it more sustainable. It is our responsibility to consider and plan as far into the future as we can for the sake of our children and grandchildren. As of this week, residents of both Falmouth and Wellfleet have passed a climate emergency declaration in their town. Thank you for your time and consideration in placing the Barnstable Climate Emergency Policy on the agenda for a future meeting and having the opportunity to talk more about this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scarlett, and I believe that you've been in communication with our town administrator. Make sure that we have your contact information, please.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you so much.
And next we have Jean. Jean, now's your chance to speak at public comment. If you would unmute.
Hey, hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes, Jean. Yes.
Okay. So hey, I've been the lucky owner of three rental properties since 2000 in the town of Barnstable. I've had nothing but five-star reviews on all my properties. I'm concerned about the new law, or maybe I don't understand enough, that it limits to 1,500 short-term rentals. I'm not sure if I'm going to be required to sell one of my properties, because I have three, and two is the max, and 1,500 may be exceeded. Another thing that I think about is that the healthcare department already has processes in place that limit number of adults that could stay, subject to fines. My properties are all registered with the state, registered town of Barnstable. I've even got Ring video cameras on each property to see who's coming and going. There's things that can be done to address the problems or the challenges you're seeing, and I have not seen any of these problems. But my longer-term concern is that the town of Barnstable and Hyannis specifically need the revenue. Local businesses live on it in the summer, and you may be cutting back the number of the tax revenue that's coming into the town and the business for the local vendors, while at the same time trying to solve a problem that maybe doesn't exist with some short-term rentals. I just want to say there's multiple ways to solve this problem, and I'm here to give some ideas if that helps.
Jean, can we have your last name, please, Jean?
Yes, it's Quagli, Q-U-A-G-L-I-A.
Okay, and what village do you live in, Jean?
So I have three rental properties, two in Hyannis and one in Hyannis Port. I live in New York, but I come stay at the properties myself. I keep an eye on them, and like I said, I ring video doorbells on each of the properties. I see everybody coming and going. 24 hours a day, I get alerts, too.
Okay, could you send your concerns and information to our administrator at the town hall, Town Council Administrator?
Sure.
You could do that by email, so that we could keep in touch, okay, as we move forward. But you said you had some other suggestions, so please send them to us.
Absolutely, because we want to solve the problem. I know global warming is important. A lot of other things are important. Limiting the number of rentals may be related to that, but let's get to the problem we're trying to solve. And let's keep bad people out of their properties and keep the place safe.
So please reach out to us so we can communicate. Thank you so much.
Very good, Paul. Good to meet you.
Yeah. Have a good evening now, Jean. Thanks.
You, too. Thank you.
Next up for public comment is Jennifer Lynch. Jennifer, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity. I wanted to speak to you tonight to object to the three-night minimum the town council is considering for non-owner-occupied, short-term rentals, and I hope the council will consider removing this draft restriction. Imposing a three-night minimum would dramatically reduce the rental options available to travelers visiting Barnstable for one in two nights, who either prefer or need to rent entire homes, instead of just a home in someone's room. These include business travelers, those here for sporting events or a weekend getaway, and many others. There are myriad reasons why travelers stay one in two nights, and many reasons they prefer to rent a home. There is no reason that I see that they should be denied that option. A three-night minimum would prevent anyone from coming to Barnstable and renting a house for the weekend. No one could say, no more could anyone say, "Let's go to the Cape for the weekend", and hope to rent a home in Barnstable, a traditional activity that's gone on happily for a long time. They, and their money, will stay in another town before they book a hotel. And if Barnstable residents have an event, say a wedding or a graduation, and want to rent a nearby home for friends or relatives for the weekend, they would not be able to do so. So you'd not only be denying this great option for travelers, you'd be denying homeowners the opportunity to make money, often much-needed extra money, and you'd be denying local businesses the money that these travelers bring. Airbnb-style rentals are a win-win, and everyone would lose under this restriction. One reason mentioned at your last meeting for imposing this minimum was supporting hotels. It is not the role of local government to favor one segment of the community by cutting off the air supply of another. It is not appropriate to craft local laws to give some in town an effective monopoly by restricting or even stopping others who want to make money, or have been, by renting their homes. Many people prefer Airbnbs now, and travelers are not going to be forced into hotels. I don't see any reason to justify this minimum. A handful of vocal residents who are opposed to short-term rentals have thrown out a laundry list of nonexistent "the sky is falling" concerns in their effort to stop this win-win situation that benefits so many. Parties is one concern. First of all, the town already has controls in place to respond to noise complaints. More important, parties happen in homes that are owner-occupied, as well as long-term renters. They are not unique to short-term rentals. I hate to see the town throw the baby out with the bathwater and ruin this opportunity for everyone, this ongoing opportunity, this long-established opportunity for everyone by putting so many unnecessary restrictions on them. Cape Coders have been renting out their homes forever. This is nothing new. The internet has only made it easier to connect visitors with homeowners and has enhanced this Cape Cod tradition and mainstay of our economy. Finally, I also object to the draft town-wide limit on short-term rentals of 1,500 total. This is a tiny fraction of Barnstable homes, and of course, many are only rented part-time. What happens when the 1,500 is reached? Are we going to deny residents who want to rent their homes the same opportunity enjoyed by everyone else? I've reached my three minutes. May I take half a minute to address the gentleman who spoke earlier?
One half-minute. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to address the gentleman who talked about a shooting. I'd like to say that the vehicle by which someone rents a home is not to blame. If the shooting happened in a blue house, would you ban blue houses? The fact that, I don't know the details of the shooting, but a shooting apparently occurred, and apparently that had something to do with somebody who rented on Airbnb. This person may have rented through a Realtor. Would you ban rentals through Realtors? Or would it negatively affect rentals through Realtors? So, they may have been, could have been an owner. Shootings happen, as we know, unfortunately, in Barnstable in owner-occupied homes. So the fact that this was rented through Airbnb, I believe, is irrelevant. And I'm sorry the shooting occurred. It's very, very serious. I'm not minimizing it at all. I'm simply saying that the vehicle through which somebody rented a home is not to blame for what happened there. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
That is all I have for public comment this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer, for calling in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and Lynn, do you have anybody?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, we do not.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Counselor, response to public comment. Counselor Bogan, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I'll be very brief. I really just want to thank the people who took the time to come and speak this evening. Mr. Wilson, your comment was as brief as you can possibly be, but the fact that you took the time to come and say it still resonates with me. Similarly, Ms. Scarlett, I appreciate your perspective. I am not that familiar with the climate emergency policy, so I look forward to learning more about it. As far as Ms. Lynch, Mr. Quagli, and Mr. Wrightson, I appreciate the array of perspectives. You know, the Greeks used to say, "The key to wisdom is knowledge", and similarly, I think the key to our enlightenment are people like you who come and speak. And finally, Mr. Wrightson, as to the incident that you referred to on Starboard Lane in Osterville, I did not even know about it, and that's not far from where I live. So I suppose you may have a point when you say, "For some reason, these incidents are not reported." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bogan. Other counselors. Counselor Starr, please. Counselor Starr.
Okay, I'd just like to thank Ms. Scarlett for giving her presentation, and I hope we can get the climate resolution written and brought up on the agenda. It's part of a whole push by individual people and small groups in all 15 towns on Cape Cod. So it'd be nice to have a unified message there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. And I thought that that was already, obviously, it's been written, if people have responded to it. So we look forward to having a hot copy. Thank you. Any other counselors? Response to public comment. Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the new voices on the STR issue coming forward. I had spoken with Jennifer Lynch earlier this week and forwarded, I think, pretty much verbatim her comments for all counselors to read, and one of the concerns being the weekend rental. And I think maybe when we work on that next week, we can talk about how to word that so that we're not restricting two-night stays. We're restricting maybe the length, however many stays we get within a week, and just make that verbiage a little clearer so that people can rent for less than three nights. They don't have to rent for three nights, but they can only rent for... Am I making any sense? I don't think I am. Anyway, we touched on it last. David Bogan's shaking and said, "No, you never make sense." But anyway, so that there can be no more than two rentals within a week is what we were really meaning, I think, by that. So I'm on it, Jennifer, and I'll keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cullen. Any other, Counselor Clark, please?
Thank you very much. On behalf of one of my constituents, I wrote, this is from Pete Sanpoe from West Barnstable. Please allow me to express strong support for our town manager to prepare the application to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for designation as a green community. As you are aware, more than 50% of the towns and cities in our state have become designated green communities since its inception 10 years ago. The majority of Cape and Island towns have already received this status and have reaped financial and environmental benefits from it. Having town of Barnstable gain this designation would, one, allow us to apply for state monies to help with education, technical assistance, technical assistance, and development of more environmentally and economically sustainable projects. As a comparison, Dennis was awarded more than $160,000 this year, and Yarmouth received more than $190,000 to help with these directives earlier in the program. Two, we pride ourselves in the quality of life and environmental resources that no doubt are major considerations for visitors that come and contribute to our local economy. Having a designation as a green community strengthens our public image and can only help to increase our identity as a desirable vacation location. We do compete with other Cape towns for tourism interest in dollars. I think it is prudent that we, as a town, not let our lack of being a green community be used against us. While there may be minor downsides to such designation, though I am not aware of even one, the timing and benefits of our local economy and environment clearly directs all of you as our elected leaders to recommend to our town manager to begin our application for becoming a green community. Thank you all in advance for your thoughtful consideration. Pete Sanpoe, West Barnstable. Thank you for letting me enter this into the record.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Comcast Northeast Excellence Operations Center. If you are calling from...
Sorry.
Counselor Snap, please.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that has to wait on those 800 numbers, right?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to all who participated in public comment tonight. I would just like to request that Michelle reach out to her network, and especially those who live in the town of Barnstable or work in the town of Barnstable, to communicate with the full council in the next couple of weeks. You know, with not having a town meeting form of governance, it's hard to kind of get the sense of support for something like the Climate Action Network, and I know it's out there. So I would urge you to either collect petitions or have people email the counselors directly on information about the Climate Action Network and why we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Snap. Thank you. That was good. Any other counselors for public climate response? Thank you. Very well done. Seeing none others, we'll close the public comment, and we're going to ask now town manager Mark Els to address us with his report. Communications. Counselor Starr.
You're muted. I know, I know. During Mr. Els' report, is David Anthony going to give his presentation about green communities?
Yes, sir. It's right in the report. I submitted to all counselors.
Okay, I didn't get a copy of that either. But would it be more appropriate to be done when that comes up in the agenda or not? But he'll be here. He'll be here, right?
David Anthony?
Yes.
Yes, sir. He's here already.
Okay, good.
We have others as well that'll be here. We'll have the full contingent.
Thank you. Thank you, town manager Mark Els.
President Hebert, a point of interest, could you please check with Cynthia Level to see that the report that I submit before noon time, the day of the council meeting, was distributed to all counselors?
Yes, sir, it was.
Thank you.
Very welcome. I, we didn't get it.
Neither did I. Apologize. I saw it. It came to me, but...
Okay. Please let me know if you would like me to have Lynn Boyard do direct emails as well. I'd be more than happy to do that. I don't see it in my emails as well.
It came in yesterday. It was not today. I saw it yesterday.
Okay.
Seems to me, but they all blend together, so don't come...
It would have been this morning.
This morning, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so if you would all kindly check if you did receive that this morning, and if not, let us know so that we can find out what happened there, okay? Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And relevant to one of the callers, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just for the record, the incident on Dumont Drive occurred on January 31st. Our police department put out a press release relevant to that. It's standard procedure on the 1st of February. It also was posted... It also was posted on social media. So, and that's standard operations, relevant to incidents. We would be more than happy to sit down with the council to look at the type of detail that we put in and the type of reporting we do, because certainly, something such as a house party would not be reported that way. So we should really have a conversation, because our intent is to inform the public, certainly to keep our community safe and maintain quality of life. So if we can add to that or do something better, we would be more than happy to do it. I'm Mark Els, Town Manager, I apologize for not identifying myself initially. This is my Town Manager update for the period of September 4th through September 17th, 2020. I'll begin my report by asking Ann Quirk to step in and provide us an update relevant to the census and the election. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, Mark. Well, let's start with the census, folks. Right now, the Town of Barnstable is at 57.5% in self-response. That means they went online or they made a phone call and they responded to the census and they filled it out, and it only takes about 10 minutes. The key here is, is that we're still kind of on the low side when you look at the state of Massachusetts as a whole. We only have until the end of September to get those numbers in, and it really is going to impact all the residents. It's whether you're young or old, it doesn't matter, it involves kids, it involves the kids as well as the older residents of the town, in that the monies that we get and the things that we can do are wrapped up into this. The key here is, is that there's so many ways you can do this. You can go online, you can call a telephone number. We have put this out, and Lynn and her group has been wonderful about getting this on social media, they've had it on the Facebook, they've had posts, we've done changes to the website, just to try and get that message out. So if you know anyone in your area that, you know, might need some help, there is the phone numbers that they can call, they have all different languages that they speak on the phone numbers to help people who don't have English as a first language. So, there's so many ways to do this, and I know we have people out there going door-to-door now, but it would really be great if you can get out to your constituents and make sure everyone is counted. I'm always saying, "Your voice is your vote." Well, your voice is, you want to be counted on the 2020 census, too. Okay, now my next subject, yes, yes, Paula.
Thanks, Ann. Is there any way that our fire districts could promote the census? I don't know what their current signs are, but I mean, since we have this really short period of time, if we could, you know, get the word out and every visual media that we have, you know, because not everybody is on social media, but some people are driving by. So I just thought maybe the, as a last-ditch effort, to try to get people to know that September 30th is the deadline to respond.
I'm sure we could ask, I, you know, I would hope that they would want that information to be out there, too, because it affects them just as much as the rest of us.
Maybe civic associations could help with disseminating information.
Absolutely.
I mean, you know, as many hands as we get on deck, the better, I think.
Absolutely, as many hands on deck is right, because it's a huge, it's a huge issue. And although 57% is not bad, it's just, wow, that's all for the Town of Barnstable, you know? We want to see it pushed up. Okay, so the next part of my little talk with you is elections. I know you just couldn't wait for this. Just so you know, as of a few days ago, we had 11,157 requests for vote by mail. Now, I want you to remember this little office and 11,000, excuse me, 11,157 requests. But just to give you a visual, in the last two days, this is what we've received for requests. I don't know if you can see it, but this is what we got in the last two days, and that's just the postcards. That's not the emails with attachments, and it goes on and on. So, we have a team getting ready to put this all together. We're going to start as soon as possible. We don't have the ballots yet, we only have the ballots for the overseas voters, the UOCAS, and those are just the ones that we can email. So, we will have them soon, I'm not sure when, we have to wait for the state, but any help that you all want to give, I'll be happy to accept. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you. Any questions further for Ann on either item? Yes, sir.
Counselor Bogan, please.
Unmute, sir.
Sorry, I thought I had taken it off. A question for Ann, because I had had the same thought about getting the word out through the civic associations. Where should we ask that they tell people to go in order to fill out, complete the census? Because presumably, they don't have the mailing anymore. I would think there's a website to which they can go?
Yes, there is, and I'm going to give that to you. They can go to mymy2020census.gov.
Thank you.
And if they want the phone number, it's 844-330-2020.
Very good, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bogan. And, Ann, just one more thing, can we get it at the community center and at the adult center on the bulletin board?
I would, yeah, I would guess so, I can, I'll call and ask.
Yeah, if you could, because many, many people go by both of those facilities, so thank you, yep. And Counselor Shaughnessy has a comment.
I was going to say, the Adult Community Center has had it both in their online newsletter as well as Thrive magazine, so they have put it out to the people that are subscribers to their newsletter.
Yes, they have, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy, and you would know that because you're the liaison to that council, thank you, thank you. Okay, I think, Manager Mark, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much. Ann, thank you for your good service, and is that information, the link to the phone number on your website, webpage?
I know that it's on Facebook, and I believe it is on the webpage, but I'll check and make sure it is.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Ann. Next is our Superintendent of Schools, Meg Mae O'Brien, to provide us an update on Barnstable Public Schools. Welcome, Meg.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, President Hebert and members of the town council. I'm going to share my screen this evening so that I can provide you with just a quick update on where we are, sorry, I'm trying to multitask, on where we are relative to Yesterday was officially our first day of school, albeit remotely, and I just want to remind everyone of what we have a phased-in approach to school reopening. So as I said, yesterday was the first day of remote learning for grades 1 through 12. Today was our first day of in-person learning for our NECC partner program, so that is a program that serves the needs of some of our students with disabilities. On September 4th, our plan is to begin the first day of remote learning for kindergarten. That gives us a bit of time to conduct kindergarten screenings during this period of time as well as orientation. And then our plan is, assuming our public health data and metrics hold steady, is that our first day of in-person learning for Cohorts A and C will be on, again, September 28th, which is a Monday, and then on October 1st, our first day of in-person learning will begin for Cohort B. I want to provide a bit of an update on our enrollment. For this last, for last school year, 2019 to 20, our enrollment was 4,910 students. That does not include our students who are out of district, in terms of students with disabilities who are placed out of district. This school year, you'll see as of September 1st, our enrollment is down to 4,806 students. I do want to note that our parents who are choosing to homeschool their children is up. Last year, our homeschool numbers, 93 students participated in homeschooling. As of today, we're up to 173. So when you see that difference in our enrollment, there's a, we're down 104 students, and 80 of 80 students out of the 104 are due to this increase in homeschool. We do continue to receive a number of homeschool applications, and in speaking with families, just anecdotally around, you know, why they're choosing to do that, it's really falling into two categories. One is just a reluctance to send their children during a pandemic to school, and even though we're offering 100% remote learning through our Cohort D model, because this, because we've moved to synchronous and asynchronous learning, so students actually have to sign on as if they were in person at the beginning of the school day, what we're hearing from some of our families is that's not going to work for them due to work schedules rules or whatnot, they would prefer to homeschool on their own schedule rather than having to sign in at a particular time as a remote learner with us. I talk a lot a bit, a lot about cohorts, so I just want to share where our numbers are and what the particular choices that parents, families have made. You'll see here Cohort D in this column, these are our students who are 100% remote. So as of now, we have 956 students who are 100% remote, and that represents approximately 20% of our enrollment. Cohort C in this column is largely students who are students with disabilities, are English language learners, students who are on a 504 plan, students with disabilities who have an IEP, and I would add to that the siblings of any of those children or students. We did that in an attempt to make it, to accommodate many of our families in the sense of if one child in the family was going to attend in-person four days a week, why not include all children in that family to attend four days a week? And then Cohorts A and B are really out of necessity to break our enrollment into those two cohorts because of the physical distancing requirements and commitments we've made, and that is that our students will always be six feet apart in the classroom during, and during various parts of the school day, transitions to other classrooms, and things of that nature. I want you to see what our classrooms look like now. This is what a classroom looks like during the necessity of COVID. You'll see the desks are six feet apart, it's probably difficult to see, but there's a line here on the floor, we've created a seven-foot teacher zone, teacher space, that provides, I don't want to say barrier, because I think that creates this illusion that teachers aren't going to be interacting with students, they certainly will be, but we're advising our teachers and educators, when they're interacting with students, that certainly everyone needs to continue to be in a mask, and those interactions should be less than 15 minutes. So you would imagine that as a teacher might be, you know, moving about this room and stopping at a desk to support or assist a student, they're not going to be staying there very long, right? That's, we don't need that to occur. Because we've reduced our classrooms to look like this, to maintain the physical distancing, and I'd also draw your attention to, there's no material in this class, right? We're not going to see a lot of additional furniture, we're not going to see curtains or a lot of paper hanging up because we disinfect the rooms on a nightly basis with a mister of sorts, that will just ruin supplies, right? So our, but our teachers are doing just a terrific job of personalizing our classrooms, but they are a bit more sparse than what you would envision or have seen in years past. So back to the physical distancing, most of our classrooms, the capacity has been reduced by a third to a half. Again, we've gone from 20 to 24 seats in a classroom to 12 or 16 seats. So as a result, even though we have 20% of our students are fully remote, will never be in the building, we still needed to create additional classrooms for all of the in-person learning. So our staffing challenge was, how do we create these additional classrooms and all the remote teachers that we needed with qualified educators and remain within our FY21 budget and resources? So we went about this in a couple of different ways, which I have bulleted there, we worked collaboratively with the Barnstable Teachers Association on educator assignments, because we didn't want to just assign educators into remote learning, for an example, like we really worked with our staff to find a good fit. We asked our educators who qualified for FMLA, right, so they had a physician's note that said they could not do in-person learning. So those educators certainly could have used their sick time and just stayed out, but the vast majority of our educators chose to, even though they couldn't be in person, rather than to be out, you know, using sick time, they offered to do, we gave them the option, and I would say the vast majority took the option to teach remotely. So that helped us, right, because we didn't need to backfill their position, we shifted those positions to our remote only. I mentioned we, you know, we worked to find volunteers for our remote positions, again, we wanted it to be a good fit. And finally, we got to the point where there were, we just needed to, again, this was sort of a cost-saving measure, if you will, we looked at our educators, who are typically support educators, such as our Title I teachers, our gateway teachers, our reading specialists, and said, "You know what, for this year, we're going to need you to be a classroom teacher." So we've made those assignments in that manner. I just, I also want to touch upon our philosophy for Cohort D, so again, that's our, Cohort D is intended for students who are 100% remote, and they have, they have a remote educator as well. So we didn't want Cohort D, even though our students are remote, to look and feel different, right? So we wanted to provide a level of service in terms of course selection, enrichment activities, that would be similar to in-person learning. Some of our Cohort D students will be sort of virtually joining in in-person learning with other cohorts, depending on the class and grade levels. What we heard loud and clear from our parents and from the community was, no one liked what occurred in the spring, in terms of remote learning, right? That there weren't enough opportunities to have live instruction and to have rigorous instruction that moved our students forward. That has changed for this school year. There are rigorous expectations in place for student engagement for remote instruction. We've asked our students to stay remote for at least a marking period, or if the year families want, because we don't want to create the situation where students are sort of in and out of in-person and remote. All of our educators in remote are Barnstable Public School educators, a lot of, I don't know, I shouldn't say a lot, a number of districts throughout the state chose to sort of farm that out to, you know, different kinds of companies or vendors that could provide online learning. Our educators were clear that they wanted the opportunity first to be able to provide that kind of learning. So in the end, we have 61 remote educators serving our 956 students. We did request this week from the school committee, and the school committee approved an additional 12 FTEs for the budget. We used our Circuit Breaker account to fund those positions, so as we think about it, we lost 33% to 50% of our classroom capacity, right? That six-foot physical distancing really shrunk the number of seats that could be available in a classroom, and 20% of our students are remote, but this still left a gap, and our staffing strategy that I just went through filled most of our, you know, we could fulfill most of what we needed through that staffing strategy. But in the end, we still needed six classroom teacher positions and six paraprofessional positions that you'll see here, and most of them were backfills for teachers who we needed, who wanted to go remote, but we still needed that in-person instructor. And then I just, I'll touch upon our school meals. We know a number of our families, um, experienced food insecurity at times and it's in, we played an important role through the spring and summer. But happy to announce that the district received a waiver enabling us to continue the food service model that we had through the spring and the summer. And that means that there will be free meals to all of our students, at least until December thirty-first. Um, all students, whether remote or in-person, are eligible to receive breakfast and lunch. Um, families shouldn't expect, you know, the cafeteria experience. Uh, we're not going to put large groups of students and mix up cohorts, um, in cafeterias. So meals will be eaten largely in the classroom while maintaining six feet of physical distancing. Hot meals won't be available, it's largely grab, uh, grabbing gold meals in, in the classroom. And that's, um, all I have for my update and happy to take any questions, uh, that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and we do have some questions. Counselor Cullen, please. Counselor Cullen?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had to unmute, it wasn't working. I wanted to first acknowledge that I really appreciate you adhering to the hybrid version and not caving to the demands for everyone to go remote all the time. Um, I really appreciate that. That's a, a big, um, help for families, the working families and parents who need to get back at, at their jobs. I also wanted to mention that today was the first real day of remote instruction. Yesterday was kind of like, you know, the goldfish in the baggie, acclimating sort of a thing. And it was a totally different experience, thankfully, than the spring, um, for my son. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that I noticed the difference and I'm thankful for it and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Counselor Cullen. Uh, any other counselors for the superintendent, please? Uh, Counselor Dagwani, please. Deborah, you have to-
You're muted.
I'm mute. There you go.
Counselor Dagwani, you need to unmute?
She was having trouble with her audio and she had been on her phone, but it looks like her phone has dropped out. Um, Deb, if you want to call that again, I'll get you right back on.
Okay, we'll postpone that question. Thank, thank you, Counselor Dagwani. Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Superintendent Mayor Brown. Um, can you speak a little bit about how or if extracurricular activities are going to occur this year? Whether it's music, athletics, uh, theater, those kinds of events?
Uh, so co-curricular activities will occur if they're already scheduled during the school day. And we do have, um, athletics at the high school that will occur as well with, with significant modification. We're not yet at a point, uh, where we're going to be doing extracurriculars or co-curriculars after school. We may get there, but our emphasis has been on opening and opening well first and then we'll add on what we can.
Follow-up, please?
Yes, please.
And how's the transportation going? Or, or I, I guess that hasn't un- unrolled yet because in-person's not until October. So I guess we should ask that later on.
Well, I can give a bit of an update on transportation. I, that's going, uh, far better than we thought it would, given, uh, because as you can imagine, the, uh, because of physical distancing on a school bus, we're really down. So a school bus that could traditionally transport seventy-five students can transport twenty-three. Um, I have to give a lot of credit to our Transportation Director, Sandy Gifford, who has been working through that. So all of our students in K through three can get the trans, can get transportation. She's working on the rest of the grade levels, but I'm very optimistic, um, that that's going to work out just fine.
Thank you, incredible amount of effort you've had to pull together for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Snapp. Counselor Dagwani, are you back with us?
On the phone. I can see everybody, but I can't, I can't hear anybody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, the superintendent, um, how are you assigning the specialists? Uh, like your art teacher, your phys ed, music teachers for students?
In the same way that we would assign them each and every year. So we, again, we want our students to, to create as much as we can a typical school year so that they would receive physical education, art, music in, as they would in every other year. It's part, it's part of their schedule. And, uh, students who are remote only also will have, uh, remote instructors in those areas as well. Less of a synchronous learning for physical education, right? That's kind of hard to, to do via Zoom with twenty, twenty kids on it. Not impossible, I mean, they've done it. Um, but there'll be things that students can do at home, sort of off-screen and then report back in as an example.
I'd like to do a video lesson, um, for your elementary students, um, scarf juggling. So it's an activity that kids can do and it's social distancing and it may be something that can be played in the classroom. And I also have some, um, scarves I'd like to donate as well to the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dagwani. Counselor Clark, did you want to ask a question of the superintendent? No, okay, thank you. Any other counselors for the superintendent? Oh, Counselor Levec, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you very much, Superintendent Mayor Brown, for all the hard work that you've put through. Um, also to your assistant, uh, Kristen Harmon, uh, there's countless hours that I know you've put in to try to make this happen. And I know there's, you know, um, you know, I got the message from you yesterday morning along with all the other high school parents. Um, you know, at the disappointment, um, again, not to cast blame, but just, um, not being able to get everything the way you want it to, so to speak, uh, for the comfort of the families, uh, for the school to start, uh, remote learning for the high school today and that getting postponed till Monday. Just wanted to also, um, you know, there's a lot, you know, that's, that, uh, hasn't happened yet. You know, my, my son doesn't know who his hub teacher's going to be, he doesn't know whose classes are going to be, teachers, things of that nature. And I know it was so much, all these requests that you've gotten just for the cohort items. Do you expect a flood of requests to come in after people find out who the teachers are going to be in classes? And, um, do you have a plan for that so that doesn't kind of hold things up? Um, is that something that you can even address? So I just was curious to know that, um, you know, you'd hope that most families are kind of, you know, maybe moving on, move forward, but I, I don't know. I, do you take those types of requests?
I mean, we can take those types of requests on a case-by-case basis. Part of my goal in the high school schedule in terms of getting it right is so we don't create the need for all of those requests, right? For the students that said, I didn't sign up for this, what did you give this for? You know, why am I in this class, right? Which is going to generate, um, all those requests. I will say the high school schedule, we met on mo- uh, uh, most of today, we spent meetings just trying to get that in shape. It is very, very challenging, um, not to get into the weeds with it, but in essence, we're creating four mini schools, right? Cohort A, B, C, and D in Barnstable High School. And trying to get our software program, which is Aspen, to run in that manner. Um, and it won't run unless we know who all our students are and get our students loaded in. And we know, uh, the staff that we have available and get that loaded in. And then we push a button and it loads, right? So when we loaded it today, it, we're at sixty-seven percent. That means almost thirty-three percent of our schedules, if we were to hand them out tomorrow, first thing in the morning, are not going to be accurate, right? So here's a bit of the dilemma. Do we hand out those schedules that are not accurate for students and are going to generate the changes? I'm thinking that you're foreshadowing for us, right? Or are we going to find ourselves tomorrow having to say to families yet again, we're not ready? So what, that we are really grappling with this, trying to get the software to get it, you know, to do what we needed to do without creating all these holes in student schedules or assign, giving out a lot. I mean, the eat, the sort of the backend around that is to give a lot of study halls, right? To at least put those in the schedule and say to kids, we'll get back to you, like, let us work on the electives. Right now it says a study hall, but it'll say French next week. So it's re, it's been varying, it's been a very frustrating process mainly because I feel like I'm letting our students down at the high school level by not being able to hand them a schedule as of yet. They've, you know, they had a tough year last year in terms of how it ended. We want this year to open up really in a good way for them and we're just not there yet. So we're meeting again first thing in the morning to see where we're at. They're doing some work tonight to see when we reload it again or we had a higher percentage than sixty-seven percent. So there'll be some decisions that need to make, be made, um, tomorrow morning in terms of, of where we're at with that. And, um, that, you know, that's, so thank you for asking the question. I should have included it in my, um, in my slides, but it's just, it's, it's, we're working on it.
Just a, a follow-up, I, and that's why I asked, because I wanted to give you an opportunity. Because I know there's, obviously, the high school, uh, parents would know because we got the robo-call, but other people in town, you know, things get, you know, um, I, again, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to do that. I know it's not an easy process. Um, I can speak for my wife and I that we will, will have patience through the process and that we, uh, we believe that in the end, um, you know, my son will get, uh, the education that he needs. So just a vote of confidence there and again, I appreciate all your hard work and, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Levec. Uh, Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, uh, Superintendent. I, I don't envy your position at all. Um, and I, I wondered, um, do you anticipate having any difficulty, uh, filling the positions that you're, uh, in need of?
Um, I don't, I don't anticipate that we'll have a lot of difficulty. I think it's just time, right? So it's, it, we're probably best case scenario, two weeks out from filling those positions, just going through our process. So I think our principals are doing a great job in filling those right now in an alternate way, but it does mean a transition for students, right? When the teacher of record comes on board, but I feel confident we'll make that, um, we'll make that transition well. I, 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 I'm sorry, well, I'll wait and, because I wanted to add something else, but it's-
No, no, go ahead, but I, I just wanted also, you, you're looking for volunteers too. Um, and how does one go about volunteering and they contact, uh, the, the administration or?
So they should contact our Family and Community Engagement Center, which is, uh, at the HYCC. And Alini Gomes is our Director of, uh, Family and Community Engagement. And she's been recruiting volunteers, um, to help virtually in a number of ways with, uh, with classrooms and with students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bogie, did you have a question? Counselor Bogie?
I did not, Mr. President.
Oh, okay, thank, thank you, no, no problem. Um, if, uh, Superintendent, again, thank you, wonderful, wonderful presentation. Um, again, not an envious position, uh, that any of us would like to be in. You're doing a great job, you and your staff, thank you so much. Uh, if you have an opportunity, and he's so much with your civics, um, if, if you could ever send out on the census, a memo through the children, that would be helpful because we need that money to come from the federal government. That's how we get it, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you. And I, I do want to mention our community partners, both through the Recreation Department and the YMCA. We have been able, so on those hybrid days, right? When they're not, we talked about working families before, right? So if your children are in school two days a week, what do you do those other days? Um, you know, with the support of Mark L's, um, for our sixth and seventh graders, there's going to be a program established to go, um, to, to do their remote learning when they're not in person, right? Those other two days for safe supervised plays. Um, we've been working with Patty Machado and John Gleason, so our sixth and seventh graders will have, um, there'll be space available for that. So thank you very much to Mark L's for making that happen. And then for our fourth and fifth graders, we've partnered up with the YMCA, has been able to create about a hundred spaces for fourth and fifth grader, so for those families that may need, um, supervised care for remote learning days. So wanted to thank everyone for that.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you very, very much. And thanks for being with us tonight and that, you have a good, good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Okay, Mark L's Town Manager, continuing with my, uh, Town Manager's update. Um, we continue to monitor the FY twenty-one revenues and expenses. We're maintaining the strict controls in our effort to respond appropriately as we progress through FY twenty-one. Uh, Mark Mill, Finance Director, shall provide an overview of fiscal policy summary. Um, we provided this to the Town Council, uh, in, uh, in two versions, uh, prior to tonight. Um, and we're looking for feedback and direction because we are proceeding with planning for the FY twenty-two budget. And Mark will summarize, um, which, which, uh, which policy relevant issues we really need clarification on tonight or in the very near future so we can begin planning for the twenty twenty-two budget and which we can take up either through hearings that we hold annually in the future or, um, I, I've asked leadership and they've agreed that the second meeting in October, we will begin a formal, uh, workshop relevant to comprehensive water management planning. I want to thank the Town Council for allowing Superintendent Mayo Brown, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn, Attorney Noah Burke, Finance Director Mill, and myself to participate in the Town Council Strategic Planning Session on September twelfth, that was last Saturday. Thank you. That was, uh, you know, certainly a, um, I thought, a very strong effort on all parts. And, uh, you know, we look forward to incorporating the Town Council Strategic Planning, uh, document into our FY twenty twenty-two budget. It, it becomes one of the major components of how we move forward with priorities and how we allocate resources, both in our operating and capital budgets. As a reminder to the Town of Barnstable, um, we continue to follow the orders and directives of our governor. Uh, again, we're still in phase three of, of the governor's four-phase recovery plan. Uh, we are required to adhere to proper social distancing and if we cannot, we need to wear a mask. Um, the governor has updated his orders and directives and I encourage everybody to go to the mask.gov covid website or our Town of Barnstable, uh, website to review these orders and directives. Um, I will point out that, um, in my last community update on, on Channel eighteen, I did share that we had some concerns out at Sandy Neck and I am pleased to report that we had a very good weekend this weekend. And I want to thank our residents and our visitors for recognizing our regulations and recognizing the orders and directives of our governor and following them. So thank you, that is greatly appreciated. We're in a, we had a much better weekend, um, and, and we need that because we want to keep all of these facilities open. Town Council has appointed the Town Manager as its representative on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Board. The full board met on September ninth. It actually had a meeting until this afternoon, scheduled for September twenty-second, but I don't think they could get enough people to commit, so they're going to get back to us. They were supposed to have gotten back to us by the end of today, but I hadn't gotten any updates. So I will keep you advised on when that next full board meeting is. Uh, the primary issue before the board is, are the regulations relevant to distribution of the funds that the board was created to administer? Um, I believe we're about ninety-five percent of the way there. And if anybody wishes to follow, um, the progress, uh, or, or any relevant information to this board, um, I've given you the link and, uh, if you go down to the bottom of the page, you can actually, um, look at the different materials and resources they have and pick from that and choose whatever it is that you might be looking for. At this point, I'll stop my Town Managers' communications and I'm going to ask David Anthony, uh, Director of Property and Risk Management, to provide us with an update relative to us proceeding with our certification, uh, as, as it relates to the Green Communities. Now, I will preface that by saying that, um, certainly we've been working, um, in Barnstable and have received, um, certainly many, many accolades, awards and, and, and monies relevant to the energy savings and, and green technologies and innovative approaches that we've incorporated into every aspect of what we do. We recognize that the value of what the Green Communities Act says to us is that we're looking to see a twenty percent reduction, um, in, in our fuel consumption, energy consumption. Um, and I think you'll hear Director Anthony share with you our progress on that. Uh, under, there are five major categories. Uh, under one of the categories, we are looking to proceed with an innovative approach to that. And we hope you will support that. I support it, um, I hope you will support us as we move forward. I will also point out a historical perspective on this. I have been before the Town Council twice, um, once as Public Works Director. I believe- once as the Assistant Town Manager. If it wasn't, it was twice as Public Works Director. Both times, we did not proceed with certification under the Green Communities Act. We have internally proceeded with energy efficiencies and in many cases led the state relevant to wind, solar, and dealing with, you know, you know, various sorts of equipment at our water pollution control facility and at our Youth and Community Center that are certainly energy efficient and innovative technologies. The reason that we did not proceed was because of the aversion to the stretch code, and that was a decision twice of our community. The innovative approach that you'll be hearing about tonight is for us to hold with the same premise of conservation of efficiencies, but to come up with a little bit different approach to that. And so I've heard it suggested that we're not in support of this. I think our record stands. I think the monies we've received stand certainly. If we receive this certification, it'll even give us access to more money, and that would be wonderful to support this important act. So I hope that I'll turn it over to David Anthony right now, and, you know, I, we also have our Commissioner, Building Commissioner with us if we want to get into that level of detailed discussion, and later this evening, there's a resolve relevant to this. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, Town Manager. I would also like to introduce Lisa Sullivan, who is the Regional Coordinator for Green Communities, which is a division of the Department of Energy Resources. She is our contact when we do interact with the Southeast Division of the Green Communities, and she's here to answer questions in case there are some technical concerns. So she'll be available to answer questions if there are any. So at this point in time, I am going to invite Sarah to, there we go. Let me just get this going. So the Green Communities presentation that we are doing tonight, let's move this to, there it is. Green Communities Act actually is not a recent development. It goes back to 2008, and as the Town Manager has hinted, we have taken several runs at this, and it really was meant to inspire cities and towns to undertake energy-related initiatives, which after the first time attempting to become designated as a green community, we had the inertia, we had the size, we had the in-house talent to be able to take on many of those initiatives ourselves while we tried to work out some of the issues associated with the stretch code. And really, the purpose was to make sure that municipalities had resources and education and incentives to try to turn their local governments more green, which would save money and save energy. It also established money as an incentive to help out those communities that many times might not be able to come up with the funds to do some of these basic projects. We can move to the next slide, please. So in 2010, the first 35 communities received their designation. It is important to note that there are currently 271, but there are about 284 that have adopted the stretch code, and there are a number of communities that are either pending or are going to be ringing up in fall or spring 2021, green community designation. And as we can see on that last bullet, Green Communities have been able to access over $49 million for energy projects, and we would certainly like to be able to put ourselves in a position, if we can get the designation to everyone's satisfaction, to be able to tap into those funds. Next slide, please. So this is just a brief summary of the benefits of designation, obviously access to grants, reducing gas emissions, which is certainly a topic, as we heard during public comment earlier, earlier today, promoting energy efficient building construction. We have been, again, in the forefront of that because of the in-house talent at DBW, to be able to put buildings in that perform extremely well. And we have been able to cite renewable energy. To put that in perspective, in town, we have over 16 megawatts of renewable energy that's already operating, and yet our entire municipal load is 14 megawatts. So we produce more renewable energy in the Town of Barnstable than we actually use in all of our municipal operations, that school, airport, that's the water treatment, and certainly municipal buildings as well. And what this has done is it has made us a leader on the Cape and in the state, and we lead by example, by demonstrating that we are in the forefront of trying to cite renewables and also being energy efficient. This gives us a platform in which we can talk to the public and encourage them to also engage in those energy activities, and we have been a partner since 1998 with the Cape Light Compact. I do represent the Town of Barnstable on the governing board and have done so since 2006. Next slide, please. So in essence, it has been hinted here, we have five criteria that we need to meet in order to apply for Green Communities. One is as-of-right zoning, which was actually one of the earliest things that we were able to pass. That is an area in town where it is an as-of-right to be able to put in renewable energy. We also have an expedited permitting process that is in place that allows for permitting in less than 365 days towards renewable energy. And we have the assurances that both of those, as they have been in place for some time, will certainly meet those criteria moving forward. Next slide, please. The next two are a challenge, partly because we can't go back in and use some of the information that we've developed since 2008. Our energy baseline and our energy reduction plan, which is the ERP, is really a five-year plan to try to reduce our energy consumption by 20%. We are only allowed to go back two years to look for our baseline, and at present, in looking at the numbers, our baseline is likely to be 2019, as 2018 was a rather mild year overall. We really have harvested the low-hanging fruit here, and we are really going to have to stretch to try to get that 20% reduction. But we have some aggressive plans, and because the Town Council funds the Capital Improvement Plan that gets submitted every year, we are able to take on heavy-duty mechanical upgrades in our buildings and vehicles so that we can potentially hit that 20% reduction. Hinting again at that green vehicle plan, really what this does is it, any vehicle that's over 8,500 gross vehicle weight is exempt from this. Emergency vehicles are exempt from this. Really identifies a smaller class or category of vehicles that can be upgraded to ever-increasing miles per gallon standards. We have about 45 vehicles out of our almost 300-vehicle fleet that would fall into the category of vehicles that need to be considered for upgrade, and we have about 20 of those that the next time they need to be purchased, we do need to concentrate on moving those into a more energy-efficient category. And half of those are under lease right now, and we can certainly meet those requirements. So I do not believe that the green vehicle plan is going to be the hindrance in this. We just have to demonstrate it and get the proper approvals in town. The next slide happens to be the stretch code bylaw adoption, although the language of the law seems to indicate that qualifying communities shall adopt the policy. One of the ways to meet this has been the stretch code, and it is the state recommended way, and it is the way that 284 communities have chosen to go, but it is not the only way that is allowed in the law. And that is the crux of this now third time through, is that this has been a bit of the sticking point for us. In many communities, it's the by-right zoning that has been a challenge. In our community, it has been this one. We move to the next slide, please. So this is our current status towards designation. If we were going to move ahead with with an application, we know that criterion one, we just need to get an official document on Town Letterhead, which was, is relatively easy to get, the expedited permitting. Again, it's just official documentation. Our baseline audits for buildings is currently underway. We were able to receive a grant, and we have gone with the Cape Light Compact and their staff to help us with our building audits, and our green vehicle policy is being updated to reflect our current fleet. And finally, we're under consideration with staff in the state for alternate compliance on our stretch code bylaw or the equivalent. That is the update to date on where we are with the Green Communities designation. I wanted to be able to present the nuts and bolts overview of what we've done and what it is. And at this point, if there are questions and it's appropriate to answer them now and not wait until later in the meeting, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anthony. Did Ms. Sullivan want to speak on this?
I just wanted to thank you for inviting me to come. I would have given, I have a 27-slide presentation, so David sent you all a lot of time on your already busy agenda. He has a great understanding of our program. He's extremely committed, as is the rest of your team, to energy conservation measures, and there's been a lot of, your energy committee, especially your volunteer committee, has expressed a lot of interest in moving forward Green Community Status, as has Mr. Anthony and Mr. L's, and it is my pleasure to help you in any way I can. So if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you for being with us this evening. We appreciate it, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you. Councilors, do you have questions of Mr. Anthony at this at this time, or is Mr. Anthony going to stay with us to lay around in the in the agenda?
Mr. Anthony will stay here through the agenda, but certainly more than happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very, very much. Councilor Dagewan, did you have a question?
No.
I'm sorry, was that yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, what's the timeline for, thank you for the presentation, first of all, and what's the timeline for the state consideration of the stretch bylaw?
Well, we have until December 30th, and it may be as specific as 4:00 PM on December 30th, to file our full application, if that's what we are going to do. And with that, we would have to demonstrate compliance with all five categories, and that would include, as we currently are moving towards some sort of alternate compliance with that category five, by not adopting the stretch code, or if we do adopt the stretch code, either one of those would be submitted as our compliance with category five.
Thank you. Any other councilors, and I believe, yes, Councilor Bogin, please.
I do. I thought that Counselor Cullen might have been asking a slightly different question than David answered. I guess the question I have, unless I'm mistaken, mistake in what you said, you said your staff is currently working with the state for an alternate plan of compliance. When do you think that might be resolved?
I would defer to Building Commissioner Florence, as this is really his his bailiwick, and I believe he is on this Zoom meeting, so if I if I could defer to him.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening, Mr. President, and thank you for the question, Council, Council Bogin. So the timeline, as Mr. Anthony said, for getting our status this year would be December 30th. It is our hope to have the alternative, not, I shouldn't call it an alternative code. What we're trying to do is amend the 2021 International Existing Energy Code to make it more strict than that document is, to enable us to meet the criteria in the Green Energy, Green Communities Act. And so we're trying to have that work done for October. We'd like to be before the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, either in November or at the latest in their December meeting. And the Board of Building Regulations and Standards is a state, is the state agency responsible for promulgating our building code?
Thank you. That's helpful. I guess I, my question is, why bring the proposed resolution before the council now as opposed to waiting until then?
I can address that. I believe it was asked to be brought before the council, and we didn't have opposition to it, where the council really defers the decision relevant to proceeding with the application to the Town Manager. So I didn't have a problem with that. If we're not ready to move, we won't. If we are ready to move, we will, and I just wanted it to be clear to the council, you know, what our intent was by going with this alternative approach. I also wanted to share the history of the good work that David Anthony and our staff have done to move us in this direction, but I do think the current effort that, you know, our Building Commissioner has undertaken is a worthwhile effort, and I do support it.
Thank you, and I wasn't suggesting by any means that there was anything untoward. I just wanted to understand what the thinking was.
Understood. Thank you.
So Councilor Stark and Councilor Neary, please. Councilor Stark.
My, my question is maybe to David Anthony, or maybe Mr. Florence, what is the basis of your appeal to the state? What, why, 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 what is, what is your basis of your appeal? What is your appeal?
Appeal is to meet the, to meet the Green Code, Green, Green Communities Act requirements of reducing the five-year, the five-year life cycle of a building.
Okay, so you, so there are 271 green communities in the state, 284 communities out of 351 have adopted the stretch code. No one else has done an alternative approach to this. The, the law requires that you prove that the Town of Barnstable has a unique situation that no other town in the state of Massachusetts has. So what is, what is our unique situation?
Well, just because everybody else does it wrong doesn't mean we should. So the, the idea that the, that there's a unique hardship here, there's a lot of them, and I'm not prepared to talk about all of them today, but you just take, for example, we're in a 140 mile an hour wind zone according to the ASCE standards, and that 140 mile an hour wind zone creates a condition where air infiltration is much more likely to incur in our buildings than most of the other 300 communities or 351 communities in the Commonwealth. That's just one example. I'm not prepared to go into all of them right now, but be happy to discuss them with you at a later date.
Could you make that available to us, what your appeal is?
Of course. Absolutely. We don't, it's not ready. It's not even written. We've just got the basis for it, and I didn't do anything until I was, had some confidence that we would be able to move forward. I didn't want to write a series of amendments to the 2021 Energy, Energy Code if this was going to get shot down in flames right out of the gate. Looks like right now, we've got a bind to proceed, and we've had a couple of, you were there, Counselor Starr, when Ian from the state applauded our efforts. He said that, that other communities have tried but have not, have not been successful. There's only been a couple, but we think we can be successful, and I'm looking forward to making the attempt for the citizens of Barnstable, because I know we can come up with a plan that's easier to understand and more cost-effective for our citizens. To try to understand the energy code right now is like trying to understand, excuse me, Councilor Bogin and, and Councilor Shaughnessy, law books and, and the average citizen trying to read law. It just, it doesn't work out like that. So I'd like to do something that our citizens can open up a book and say, here's what I need to do, and, and that's the biggest thing I want to be able to accomplish.
Most citizens don't open up the building code anyway, but you talk about how you, the stretch code, you don't really think that that's an effective way to go because it adds another whole code to the Massachusetts system so that builders now have two codes to work with. Is that right?
That's not what I said, no.
Well, so, so right now, we have a uniform building code in Massachusetts, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're proposing a separate code just for the Town of Barnstable?
No, sir.
But if, but if I built something in Mashpee, I don't have to do the same thing that you're doing. So let's, yeah, this, I think we should move on.
Okay.
Counselor Neary, and then I think Councilor Dagewan wants to speak also, but Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. Based on what I've heard. Thank you, President Hebert. Based on what I've heard, we have a tight window to get anything approved regardless before the December deadline. As I understand it, the way it was just laid out, we've got roughly five targets, for lack of a better word, we need to hit. There was a mention about our energy baseline is currently undergoing audits. Does, if, if we were to have these audits completed in three months, I assume that the work does not have to be done, but there has to be a, an indication that the town will follow through on upgrading, heating, mechanical systems to the town to create greater efficiencies. So that's number one. That's number three. We need to get over that hoop. The second hoop would be the green vehicle plan. I, I'm hearing that there are roughly 25 vehicles that are coming up soon, under the impression that these are light duty vehicles, maybe inspectional services vehicles, housing vehicles, different department vehicles. I'm going to also take a reach and, and figure that they're probably hybrid models in order to gain greater fuel efficiency. Generally speaking, on the, on the municipal level, even with all of the incentives that are available for hybrids, generally speaking, these vehicles cost more. Now, when you're leasing it, it becomes a little bit of a fine line. I assume that the town has, has put a pencil to whatever the infrastructure costs would run, as well as possible increases in lease payments would run. So those are two out of the five. And then we're going to apply for the stretch code bylaw by adoption, right? I have had multiple attempts to reach anybody in the state currently. And frankly, the state is not in business currently. I'm talking about licensing divisions, the whole bit. You can't reach anybody up there. You got to voicemail. So I'm not trying to be fresh here, but we've got three months to try to adopt this thing. I, I'm just thinking that, that it's, in my wildest dreams, I don't think all these pieces could come together in three months. I don't even know whether I need a comment on that from staff, but that would be my opinion on things. So thoughts?
Thank you, Counselor Neary. Counselor Dagewen, did you have something to ask?
Yes, I, well, just a comment, I guess. The Green Community Plan has been around since 2008. And the town has done quite a bit to, to, I guess, to actually fulfill a lot of these criteria. And just listening to David Anthony a few minutes ago, you know, a lot of these things are already underway. And we, we are looking pretty good in terms of the criteria, except for the final one. Can you still hear me? Except for the final one. And as the council was just speaking, I am concerned about the fact that, of the COVID and how difficult it is to get anybody at the state to respond to, to, to things. And I, I'm feeling, you know, there's some reluctance to, to try to, to go for this. Am I correct that, you know, we, we really don't want to? And I guess I'm going to direct this to Mr. Florence, because he's going to be the one who's really in-depth at dealing with a lot of this. Is this a difficult thing to accomplish in the time period that we're talking about here? And what, what else could the town or anybody else do to help with this, this last criteria on the stretch code?
Thank you, Counselor Dagewen and Mr. President. I think the town is absolutely in favor of, as, as Manager Ellis said, and, and Mr. Anthony have said, of exploring the possibility of, of being a green community. I don't have any issue with that. Do I think we can do it in the timeframe? It's going to be a really heavy lift for us, but we're at your service. And if that's what you instruct us to do, I will do everything I can to get us there before the December deadline.
Okay, so just be aware that we, this is on the agenda for, for the conversation this evening. But if this is, if this is working for, for the counselors, we'll continue on with this. If at any point, counselors decide we want to move along with the agenda. But we got counselors all raising their hands here. So we're going to do Counselor Shaughnessy, then Counselor Snep, then Counselor Steinheber, is how I saw that, and then now Counselor Stark. So.
Okay, I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. Florence for your response.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor Dagewen. And Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I suppose my question tags on to Counselor Bogan as well as Counselor Neary, specific only to, you know, the desire to amend the existing building code rather than to adapt, adopt stretch. And you mentioned the October and the November deadlines. So my question is just, even if we could meet the other two items, which are the vehicles, as well as just being able to show improvements and efficiencies, I think we only get to use the last two years, even if we can meet those, really from a feasibility perspective, since part of that amendment, to use our own policy, is out of our hands and at the state level, I guess, just what is the feasibility of that happening by December 30th? Because I know in all my dealings with the state, those have been delayed at least six weeks off their sort of normal fulfillment times or usual wait times.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Florence, did you want to respond to that? You want to listen to any other questions first?
Whatever you decide, Mr. President.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Counselor Snep next, and then Counselor Steinheber. Counselor Snep?
Unless I'm mistaken, I think that the criteria is that three and four, I don't think we have to meet certain thresholds by the time we make an application, but we have to have some plan in place that would allow us to move forward with that. So I don't think that time constraint is really applicable to those two criteria. When it comes to the fifth criteria, and I know it's kind of getting into the weeds, I did have a chance to read Commissioner Florence's position paper regarding the stretch code and some concerns about losing local control, because I believe some of the energy efficiency components require an outside vendor to do the testing, you know, to make sure that there's certain. So I, I speak from no knowledge of exactly how the energy stuff works, but I, I do understand that I believe all, and maybe Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, that all 14 towns on Cape Cod have either passed the Green Communities Act or in the process of applying for it. So that the town of Barnstable would be sort of an island among the rest of our fellow towns on Cape Cod if, if we didn't adopt the stretch code. And again, my understanding with most construction industry is that having something predictable and consistent is actually better than having something that's different in one, one community. And so even though there might not be exactly perfection in the stretch code that's being presented, I wonder if moving forward with an alternative is really in the best interests of our community, because it's going to be a, a different interpretation and a different process. So just wanted to add that perspective.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Steinheber?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's been some talk about deadlines, and that's just this year's deadline. It's not the, the last deadline. There'll be another one next year. So there isn't really a need to rush, to slap something together. It's really kind of a faulty deadline. You can just apply for it next time around. But what this really gets to, and, and Town Manager Ellis has brought this up, this has been thoroughly fast vetted, thought about for a long time. The town's really been living the tenants of it going back over a decade. But again, that fifth, that fifth criteria, component is the poison pill in the Green Communities Act. There's no getting around that. And you got to get, go back to, and I talk about this all the time. And I know some people were surprised at the strategic meeting to hear it, even though we talk about it all the time. But our budget, to be able to level fund our services in town, we need a million dollars in new growth every year. And that is not easy to do. I think Counselor Dagewen was on the council back in the last big recession. There was some really hard decisions to make, and we still had some new growth coming in. But I think it got down to maybe like 600,000 and, and we were in trouble. But we really need to be at that million dollar level every year in new growth dollars. So the last thing we ever want to do is put impediments up to investment, to new growth. We don't want to put anything, we do add cost to things. You know, this affects, if you ever have, adopt a stretch code, it involves hiring a designer. It involves paying per inspection. It, you lose the local control and your occupancy permits. I've talked with developers that they've had to deal with green communities on the Cape, absolute nightmare. And it adds time. And it even in a, without the Green Communities Act, trying to get a project online and built and getting all the inspections coordinated, is tough enough as it is, let alone another unnecessary third party coming in. But this is going to increase the cost of residential construction, and not just new, this is remodel. So if 50% of the value of your home, you're doing a remodel, you get a $300,000 house, and it doesn't take long to come up with a $150,000 remodel, a kitchen and a, you know, a garage and a bedroom. And before you know it, guess what? You got to retrofit the whole house under stretch code. It's going to affect commercial as well. And when you're talking about commercial, right now on the Cape, you're, you're between $250 to $350 a square foot. A residential, you're lucky to get $175 a square foot. That's being really careful. And some of these new housing projects, these affordable housing projects we have coming down the line, very, very small margin. And something like a stretch code would eliminate some of these housing projects. They would not be able to pull it off because of the added costs. Now, I think, like I said, we've been living the tenants of the Green Community Act. There's different ways to get to the same result. This is really just chasing grant money. So there's a couple different ways to do it. You got, but you got to, you got to choose the right path. You know, I like to go swimming, but I prefer to walk into the water and not jump off the Sagamore Bridge to go do it. So that's what we're looking at here. How do we get, how do we get, how do we go swimming? How do we get to where we want to be at the end of the Green Communities Act? And as far as being the only town, if we were an island, great, be an island for an invitation to investment in our community, because they don't have to deal with that or the extra costs. And you only get one shot at bricks and mortar, construction and new development in town. That, we need that. So, and the other thing to say that, while no one else has done it, no one else did Chapter H under the Cape Cod Commission before either, but we did. So we've always been a leader. We can be a leader on this. And what this does is it eliminates that poison pill. And it puts in place the tenants of what we're trying to get to. And it is allowed under the law. And this is something that we really need to factor into all of our decisions when it comes to what we do to affect investment, redevelopment, housing, everything in our community. As you have to think about new growth dollars. So I would just urge my counselors to think very careful about this. I think we're probably all fine with being, getting designated as a Green Communities Act, but there's different ways to go about it. And the stretch code is not the way to go about it. And I applaud the town manager and the staff for the thorough information and all the vetting that's gone on, you know, around this for, for many years.
Thank you, Counselor Steinheber. In all due respect, Madam Vice President has not spoken on this yet, and she's requesting to speak.
Yeah, actually, I think I'm going to hold my comment for when the item comes for the council. I really don't have any questions, but I appreciate Mr. Anthony and Commissioner Florence's comments and perspective on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And so Counselor Stark, then Counselor Snep. Counselor Stark, please.
I'd like to start with having Mr. Anthony talk to the criteria three and four. I know he's been working diligently to make sure all of these criteria are moving forward. He's been walking buildings. He's done energy audits. Both of the, both number three and number four, I think are very close to being completed.
Thank you. Counselor Snep actually hit the nail on the head. These are both proposed plans. We don't have to have things solved per se, but we have to put forward a plan. The ERP, the energy reduction plan, is going to be based and pulled from basically the projects that are sitting, waiting to be funded through our CIP. Again, the town and the town council has had this ongoing capital improvement plan that actually provides us with a roadmap towards many of the major mechanical pieces that we need to do, because much of the smaller, low-hanging fruit that many communities could do if they had not started any green activities, they don't exist because we've already taken them. So I believe that in our green vehicle fleet, as we move forward to take a look at new vehicles, we have seven of those 23 vehicles that are up, that are one mile per gallon below, simply because they're vehicles that are four years old. And when they come up to be replaced, they'll meet the new miles per gallon standard easily. 12 of those vehicles are the leased fleet for regulatory services, and they happen to be Toyota Camrys, which you would think would meet the green vehicle standard right out of the gate, except that they're a couple of years old, and that we would make sure that any new leased fleet would actually meet those new standards as a condition of entering into those leases. So just between those couple of categories of vehicles, we can handle about 90% of our green vehicle fleet as it needs to move forward. So I'm fairly confident that we would be able to address three and four by the end of this year, at least to put plans in place that would meet the criterias, three and four.
So can I, can I ask Lisa Sullivan a question? I know that Mr. Steinheber talked about commercial building. The, the stretch code only refers to, to commercial buildings that are larger than 100,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Correct, for $40,000, $40,000 square feet of conditioned space. The comment, one comment that was very erroneous was it does not apply, stretch code does not apply to residential additions or renovations. They're completely exempt. So that is not, it's only new construction. We haven't had any reports of, of this affecting people's new growth. Local building officials retain control over permitting and certificates of occupancy. I would say a hers-rater involvement in this is kind of akin to the one, I just want to say, kind of like a septic designer and an installer. It's, it's a very minor process in the building process, if you want to compare it to that. Just akin to that, anyway.
Can, can you repeat that first sentence? You said that, that it doesn't affect local control of permits?
It doesn't affect local control over permitting. It's a, a third-party hers-rater comes in and provides a piece of paper. They do the build, the blower door test, and they provide a hers-rating. And the building official makes sure that it meets the, the criteria, adds it to the file, and then issues a certificate of occupancy. Your building inspector issues a certificate of occupancy. A hers-rater doesn't issue it.
Okay, so I, so thank you. So I think that, that I agree with Ms. Ms. Snep that, that the stretch code is, is something we could come to before the end of the year. We could vote on it in November if the alternative method doesn't seem to be coming to fruition. So I, I think that can keep our door open so that we can still move this forward. I think we need, I don't want to get into the weeds about the whole thing. This is, it's a tough, when you get into little things about the stretch code, it gets very complicated very quickly. I'm really, I'm not.
Mr. President, I, you know, I.
I'm not, excuse me.
I'm charged passion on this. However, if Ms. Sullivan is going to continue on with the meeting, I think we should defer any, any further discussion on, on this item to when that item comes up and finish our town manager report.
Counselor Snep, are you, are you agreeing to that? Because you had a question. And Counselor Steinheber? Is that, is that, you, you both had your hand up. So if you both agree, then we're, we're going to move on, and then we're going to take this up later. And Ms. Sullivan, would, are you planning to stay to that item, which is the last item of the evening?
Yes, sir. I am willing to stay on and provide whatever support is needed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Point of order, Mr. President. But what we have here is, in all due respect, we have an individual that. Point of order, Mr. President, but what we have here is, in all due respect, we have an individual that is working for this department and pushing this act across the Commonwealth. We don't have the counterbalance. So I wouldn't be comfortable, maybe we need to postpone this item when it comes up, but-
Who's, who's the counterbalance?
We could, we could, we could get people that are actually in construction and developers to talk about their experience with it. I don't think we should be having a one-sided panel discussion.
Okay. Point well taken. It almost sounds like we would use, we could use a workshop on this to bring in both sides or all sides.
That would be, that would be a great idea. You need, you need to get the full story.
All right, and any councillors? Do you agree?
I agree, we need the full story.
Okay, thank you very much. So what we're going to do is, Ms. Sullivan, you are most welcome to stay till the, to the end. We'll try not to make it too late. But we're going to go on with the managers' report unless any councillors object to that. Seeing none, we're going to go back to the managers' report. Thank you all for, you know, great participation.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mark Ellis, Town Manager. The last two items will be addressed by Dan Santos. Director Santos?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, members of the council. I'd like to talk about, first of all, I'm very pleased to share with you that construction of the MAR drinking water filtration plant is nearly complete. The plant will treat water from three wells to eliminate PFAS compounds and 1-4 dioxane. Completion of this project will enable the town to curtail its purchase of water from the town of Yarmouth. Currently, the equipment is undergoing final testing and operator training is underway. Final DEP inspection and local permit sign-off activities are being scheduled, and startup will occur in the next two to three weeks. We are approximately thirty days ahead of our original schedule and within the appropriated budget. We'd be happy to provide a tour to any interested councillors. If any of you are interested, just let me know. And given the pandemic, we probably will not have a typical ribbon-cutting ceremony like we usually do. But I'm sure we can be creative and recognize the milestone in some other fashion. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that particular item.
Any, any councillors, any questions on that item? Seeing none, if you would continue, Director Santos. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have a brief update on comprehensive wastewater management planning activities since August. It's just been a few weeks ago, and not a whole lot that's changed. Like to say that relative to the plan itself, we continue our work on the environmental impact report, which we will be submitting in October. And as I told you last month, we are coordinating with all of the agencies that NEPA Office has asked us to do, and we've, we've done those coordination meetings. Relative to Joint Base Cape Cod, I have no, no further information over last month. Working with our partner there, Converge, they have not heard other than the review is underway. I suspect that COVID pandemic has something to do with this effort. The effort to locate a pump station in Centerville in the vicinity of Mother's Park as an alternative to the Main Street location continues with work on legal research in order to get the property designated a town road. Currently, Mother's Park Road is considered a county road, so it's legal work that has to be done there. That seems to be going well. I don't anticipate any issues, but it is a process that we have to go through. Relative to the projects, Route Twenty-Eight East Project, which is the pump station at the intersection of Finney's Lane and Route Twenty-Eight, and then sewer-ing to the plant, Forest Main, and other sewer-ing in the vicinity of Finney's Lane. That preliminary design work continues. As we discussed last meeting, survey work is underway, and that will continue for, for some number of months. And we are also conducting borings right now. These are soil borings to understand the subsurface conditions along Route Twenty-Eight, where we will be installing the sewer. Construction of this project will start probably a year from now. The Strawberry Hill Road project, that's being done in conjunction with the work that Vineyard Wind is doing. That design is underway, that at this point is on track, at least for us, to begin construction in the spring. If in fact Vineyard Wind does begin at that point, we will be ready to have the sewers from Cobles Beach all the way to the Independence Park substation occur during that timeframe. And then finally, the Long Pond, Finney's Lane, and Route Twenty-Eight to Route One Forty-Nine work, as I just mentioned. All of that work in the pre-design effort is underway, as well as the surveying, which I just mentioned. And the target for the survey completion is March of 2021. So that's just a brief update on where we are with the plan to date, and I'd be happy to, if I had to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Santos. Any questions directed to Director Santos from the councillors? Councillor Dag, Councillor Bogan, I'm sorry.
And thank you, Dan, and forgive me if you said this, and also forgive me if I'm mistaken in my reference to the agency. I think you indicated we're waiting for sign-off on the plan by NEPA. What happens after that? Soon we get it, best-case scenario. I guess what I'm asking is, when's the rubber hit the road? When do we actually start putting plant in the ground?
Okay, so the rubber has hit the road, and we are underway, and that's all these design efforts that we have going on. So the first construction project, if the Vineyard Wind moves ahead relative to sewers, will begin in next spring. And then after that, we'll be in the fall with that pump station at Finney's and Route Twenty-Eight. Regarding the Mass Environmental Policy Act process, it's a process that we go back and forth, and the last part of that is the submission of an environmental impact report, which they will, they will review, they may or may not have comments, and then our plan will have its final blessing, if you will. But we are moving ahead. There's nothing that's keeping us from doing that. That's just something we have to complete as part of the process.
Thank you. And that was not intended by any means to be a criticism, but just to address my own ignorance. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Director Santos, if I could ask this question. When we talk about innovative alternative systems, have we gotten anything that, that's exciting, that's being presented to us? And in particular, I'm looking at Mr. Zenas Crocker's concept on innovation. I, I believe that he was giving a pots per million, which I felt was still pretty high. Can you correct me on that if I'm wrong? That the system that Mr. Crocker-
Well, we are working with the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition on a project. Unfortunately, we submitted a grant request to EPA. We didn't get the grant. But the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition Board of Directors has actually decided to fund this project themselves, which is the installation of several dozen alternative septic systems in the vicinity of Shubal Pond, which will treat primarily nitrogen, which is the issue that we're concerned with in our coastal estuaries, from what is anywhere from twenty-five to forty milligrams per liter down to maybe four or five milligrams per liter. So there's, there are a number of these trial systems in place by the designer. They are seeing those kind of results, and we want to do a large-scale trial here in Barnstable to prove to the DEP that these systems work. And once we do that, they'd be available for any homeowner to install. And that could be a tremendous benefit in any of the areas that are adjacent to our coastal water resource.
So thank you again just for my identification, four to five milliliters. What does that break down to, pots per million?
A milligram per liter is a pot per million.
Okay, so it's four to five pots per million. Oh, okay. Thank you very, very much. Councillor Bogan, please.
Yeah, and again, I'll be very brief. Councillor LeBeck and I have an over-under on whether or not we'll finish before eleven, so. I, I will offer that, I actually did a ride-out last week with Mr. Crocker. He would welcome the opportunity. If any councillor wants to do a ride-out, he did take me to the location of some of those alternative systems near Shubal Pond. They're also doing some work in Cranberry Boggs in Marskins Mills. I actually had occasion to meet a town manager's daughter, and Lindsay Council, who were out there doing some work in hip waiters, and it was very interesting. And he is also willing to come before the council, but was trying to be respectful of the fact that we were in a, in a difficult circumstance with COVID-19, and trying to get beyond the short-term rental issue. But he is more than happy to come in and speak to any councillor at any time, or the council as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. And Councillor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. I, I believe Town Manager Ellis mentioned that we will be starting some discussion on the financing of our comprehensive waste management plan in October. And I was wondering, when is the earliest possible time that a sewer assessment or connection would be occurring?
We, we would anticipate, you know, assuming that we go forward as preliminary, preliminarily presented at the time of the appropriation order, we would anticipate betterments or sewer assessments, depending on which way we go with this, to occur once the system went online. The Betterment Law, I believe, is different than that, so that would be under the, the discussion we had was to use a sewer assessment, and it would be associated with when the system went online. A Betterment, I believe, has specific timeframes from the time of the town council vote to the time of completion of construction as to when that needs to be assessed. So that's why we need to have this conversation and get closure on this conversation before the end of the calendar year. So next year. Sorry, that was a long answer.
Yeah, and I, I, I missed a little, the, the first part of it, but that's fine. I know that it's, it's urgent. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you, Councillor President Hebert, and thank you, Director Santos. Quick question, is there an update on the evaluation of the drillings that were done to evaluate potential municipal water sources for the Hyannis water, water supply system?
The study of alternative water supply systems throughout the town, the field work and the sampling analysis has been completed. And right now, the consultant that did that work is preparing a draft report. And as soon as that's done, I will review it with my staff, and we will get any comments back, get it finalized, and get it presented and distributed to you all, Town Manager and anyone who's interested.
Thank you, Director Santos. If I might ask one more question. Our base water facility currently located in Hyannis, what is pots per million that we normally discharge?
Around five.
Around five, so.
Our permit requires us to meet ten, but we actually do better than that, and we are averaging around four to five.
Thank you very, very much. We are doing very, very well at our facility. When you look at this alternative system at four to five, I, I think kudos to your staff for what we're producing at our own shop, so thank you very much for that. Okay, so any other questions of Director Santos? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go back to Town Manager. That's okay with you, Director Santos?
Oh, that's fine with me.
Yeah, with, with, with Director Santos concluding, so does my Town Manager communication. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh-oh. Okay, stuff just came up on my screen that I just got rid of, so we're set. Okay. Thank you, Town Manager, and so now, and thank you, Director Santos. So now, Town Manager, you think you have a, a budget planning session along with Director Finance, Mark Mill? Is that correct?
Yes, we would like to review the financial policy for fiscal year 2022, both for operating capital, and I will turn it over to Director Mill. He has a presentation and subsequent discussion. Thank you.
Okay, just, just so all the councillors know, unless somebody signals to me that you need a break right now, we will, we will have this presentation by Director Mill and Town Manager, and then we will take a, a quick break before we go into the orders of the day, unless anyone signals to me that they need it right now. Mattel Clark, are you okay? Yes? Okay, all right. Just for people who have jobs to do, that they need a break when they need a break, so, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll move on. Thank you, Director Mill, for being with us, and you both have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hebert, and good evening, Town Councillors, you all this evening. As Town Manager Ellis alluded to earlier this evening, we have provided all of you with a document reviewing the financial policy of the town. I wanted to review some of those policies in more detail. I'm not going to review them all tonight. Going to share my screen here. So the, the documents I, that, that we provided to you included a recommendation from, and that recommendation on the financial policy was a recommendation from me to the Town Manager as we go into developing the fiscal year 22 operating and capital budgets. We wanted to present, have an opportunity to present those to you so that if you had desire to make any changes to those policies at the beginning of the budget process, that, that would be the opportune time to do them for us, to provide us, you know, the time to appropriately plan for those changes. Nothing, we're not planning right now anything significant from the past. These are the, the financial policies that I'll review tonight, are the ones here in black. I'm going to skip over the ones highlighted in blue. The residential exemption in a tax classification policies are really subcomponents of a tax levy policy. You deal with those every year around November as we set the tax rate. They do not affect budget planning, as they do not change the amount of tax revenue we will generate. They merely shift taxes, the tax levy between classes and within classes. The other area I'm not going to review tonight is the funding for the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And a couple of subcomponents of that that we're looking at involve the Community Preservation Fund and additional stabilization fund for funding that plan. Again, as it was said earlier this evening, that will be reviewed in a workshop format sometime in October. So on the tax policy, the first thing I wanted to review is, it provides you with history of the tax levy over the past twenty years and nineteen years for the town of Barnstable. Our tax levy has averaged here in the last column around three point four percent a year for increase, for an increase. And that's more than two and a half percent because it includes new growth. We can raise the tax levy by two and a half percent, the base amount from the previous year, and plus a factor for new property tax growth, as well as debt exclusions that are approved by voters. So that we have averaged somewhere between three, three and a half percent for most of the years. Over this period, it's been three point- Over this period, it's been 3.4%. And we've- and the tax revenue, uh, that we plan on raising for fiscal year 21 of 132 million is about 2.8% more than the previous year, which is lower than most years, and that's because of a reduction in debt service, as well as a lower estimate for new growth that we have for fiscal year 21. To give you an example, um, of what it would look like if we were to not raise the tax levy in a given year, um, as allowed under Proposition Two and a Half, this provides what that would look like. So in fiscal year 21, we're looking at a tax levy excluding debt exclusions because they don't factor into the formula of 129.4 million dollars. In fiscal year 22, if we were going to maintain a level tax levy, we could raise it as high as 133 million, but if we kept it levy, it would keep about 4 million dollars of excess excess taxing capacity on the books, so to speak, for the Town of Barnes. That wouldn't go away. We were- we'd be allowed to carry that forward to the next year. However, if we were to do that, that would mean we would have to either reduce the budget or find an alternative revenue source other than an increase in the property tax levy to fund the budget. We could use reserves, uh, for a year, um, to keep the, uh, level services and to fund any cost increases. But then what happens the following year if we don't have those reserves to continue that practice? We could end up in a position where we have to take full advantage of the excess capacity created from the previous year, as well as the increase in the tax levy from the new year, which could result in a spike in the tax rate or a tax levy of six and a quarter percent. So our policy has always been to, uh, try to keep a smooth increase in the tax levy of around three to three and a half percent, um, implementing the two and a half percent increase that's allowed under the law, as well as a factor for new growth. Um, Mr. President, I could stop here and ask any que- answer any questions on this particular policy, or I could move on to the next one. How would you like to do that?
I- I think since it's fresh in, um, in the Counselor's presentation, uh, we- we could ask for questions right now. I just need to get the screen back. Thank you. Counselors, any questions on this particular, um, the tax levy? Uh, Counselor Steinheber, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mark, I know we've had this discussion prior, but at the last meeting, uh, there was some discussion about the kind of automatic two and a half, uh, raising of taxes every year. Can you kind of get- just give a back of the envelope, like if we held it to 2%, you know, what does that really translate to, uh, as far as our budget?
Uh, half percent would probably be around, uh, $600,000 that we would have to, um, you know, that we wouldn't be able to raise through taxes, and we would find another- have to find another, uh, funding source, or we'd make reductions, um, in that amount. Because as, um, you know, a- as our history has shown, that we need two and a half percent plus a million dollars in new growth just to level fund services. So it would be about $1,000.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that information out there. Roughly, it's 600,000 for every half percent.
It's about that.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Director Mill, that seems to be it for questions, if you want to continue.
Could I- could I interrupt for a moment?
Yes, Town Manager.
I- I, thank you, Mark, but I- and I think it's important that these are the policies that we worked under in development of prior fiscal year budgets. So as we move on, without comment, we are going to move into FY22, assuming that those are remaining in place. So it's important that, um, we don't have to resolve a change. It would be nice to, because it is time to- for us to begin the FY22 budget, but when Mark and I spoke about this, we thought it important to bring back to the council, as a prelude to the comprehensive water management discussion, um, a general discussion about fiscal policy. And therefore, Mark's really going through this, providing, uh, uh, an explanation of what we are doing, but this is really the opportunity to say, we want to revisit that. And if that's the case, um, that needs to become a priority. Thank you.
Uh, okay, so, uh, let's, uh, we're not taking a vote on this, but we need to- to feel the, um, the temperature in the room, if- if councilors are going to have any issues with these standard ways that- that are going to be presented by Director Mill tonight. Uh, Counselor Mary, please.
Thank you, and thank you, Mark. Um, our- our current, um, fiscal process increases our, uh, reserves every year, though, as well. So, um, I mean, I- this is good to have healthy and stable reserves. Um, as the books get kind of brought back and free cash comes back into our- our budget, what- what does that generally run on an annual basis? Again, just in terms of if we're adding two and a half percent, or, uh, in this case, roughly $3 million to the budget every year, um, where- where do our reserves fall in that- in that equation?
Yeah, I actually have, um, a couple of slides later on our presentation that are going to provide you history-
Thank you.
-on those reserves and what our strategic plan has been as far as using those reserves, and for what purposes. Because we don't want to accumulate reserves unnecessarily.
Right.
You mentioned that this strategic planning session, we're not in business making money. So we have this strategic plan in place to address, um, you know, how- what do you do with excess reserves? And I'm going to show you that.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. So it's clear that, uh, we're going to move to the next slide, but, um, we're- we're not picking up from any councilors right now that anybody has a problem with our two and a half percent, um, provisioned policy. Am I correct? And they're seeing any questions? Okay. Thank you very much if you want to continue. Thank you very much, Director Mill.
Okay, the next, um, slide I want to look over, uh, present to you was the new property tax growth allocation and how we've been allocating the growth in new property taxes. Um, it was just mentioned tonight earlier that we need a million dollars a year in order to fund our ongoing operating budget costs. Uh, the table on the left here shows you what our new growth dollars have been over the past several years. And you can see some years we were well below a million dollars, and that was after the Great Concession. Uh, however, over the past six years, we've been, um, seeing a resurgence of new building growth in town. Um, and we've been able to take advantage of that by, like, grabbing that extra- extra new growth and adding it to the contribution to our capital trust fund every year. And we want to continue with that policy of taking the first million dollars of new property tax growth, allocating it to the operating budget, and then any excess goes to the capital trust fund. Uh, so for example, if this were to continue down this path, we're successful to generate this type of new growth over the next six years, as we have in the past six years, our base contribution right now, $10,442,000, um, would grow to $13.8 million over the next six-year period. That's because our policies increased that base contribution by two and a half percent, plus grab that new growth, those new growth dollars in excess of $1 million, and add those to the base contribution from the previous year to the capital program. Um, we're- I'm recommending that we continue to go forward with that practice, and it's successful, and we can generate that kind of new growth that we have over the past six years. It'll increase significantly by over $3.5 million, or about $3.5 million, that increase to the capital program. That level of new funding could provide us another $45 million new 20-year borrowings for the capital program. So, any questions on that policy?
Counselors, any questions? Uh, Director Mill, that last pot, the forty-five million dollars, uh, that kind of escaped me, that we would be at, uh, what does that mean, that forty-five million?
So, we were- we- if we were to have an additional $3.5 million a year going into the capital program, we could fund the $3.5 million of new loans, which is about $45 million in construction costs amortized over a 20-year period.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Uh, any other councilors' questions on that presentation? Uh, Counselor, uh, Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark. Um, so, I think this- this, um, capital program policy question is one that will have to be, um, answered by the council, because it looks like, you know, it's going to be almost impossible to stay within two and a half if we're going to, um, maintain our capital projects and then continue to build new assets as your policy review states. Um, so I- I would think that, you know, we've got to come up with some kind of dollar amount, and you're recommending anything over a million dollars, 3 million, or what's your recommendation?
Yeah, so, um, that's actually covered in the next slide that I'm going to present. Some recommendations. You guys are great at anticipating what I'm going to talk about.
Okay, uh, then one- one comment. It's too bad we couldn't have our fire districts hold to two and a half percent.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
All right, that seems to be it for right now. Thank you. We can move on to the next slide.
For the next one? Um, so here's that capital program policy. These are some of the initial thoughts that I have as far as, um, criteria that we maybe want to consider for seeking capital exclusion or a debt exclusion for. The construction of an asset, for example. We're going to build something new, um, add another asset to our inventory, we have to maintain it. Perhaps we consider a debt exclusion override. You see this oftentimes with schools. Um, this is when you're building a new school building, for example, or if you're building, for example, a new community center, um, some- a lot of communities put questions like that on a ballot to see if the community wants to support that and fund it through a debt exclusion override. Um, another one could be that we may look at the rehabilitation of an existing asset whose cost exceeds 50% of the annual capacity of the funding available for the capital program. So in any year, if we have, say, $10 million available for capital funding, if an asset, one asset, um, is going to cost us half, five- five million dollars or more to rehabilitate, perhaps we consider putting that on a debt exclusion override, so that one particular project doesn't consume a majority of the capacity of funding for any given year. Another consideration would be a project that would promote future economic development, uh, with the potential to increase new property tax growth. If we fund a project through a debt exclusion or something like that, for example, perhaps we can grab the new property tax growth that's generated in the future fiscal years to help offset the cost of that debt exclusion. Um, and another idea I had was the projects that promote the preservation of property values in town. An example of that would be the comprehensive wastewater management plan, or maybe a coastal resiliency project, um, as those start to emerge. Uh, so those are some of my initial thoughts regarding the types of projects that we may want to consider bringing forward in the form of a capital or debt exclusion. Uh, I'll stop there, if there's any questions on that.
I'm not- I'm not seeing any- any questions. No questions at this time. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the next area, we're looking at the revenue sharing policy, 60/40 revenue sharing policy. I think you're all familiar with how this works, but here's a quick overview. Um, what we do is we look at our- all of our resources from property taxes, state aid, and local receipts. We look at the year-over-year change, um, and then from that increase, we deduct our fixed cost increases year-over-year, leaving us a balance remaining in new growth. And in this example, it's 2.9 million dollars, and that's what we have traditionally split with this, between the school departments and the municipal departments on a 60% to 40% basis. Now, how did we arrive at that? Um, several years ago, when we created that policy, we were folding benefits into each department's budget. Um, and so if we look at that, if we repeated that practice today, this is what it would look like for fiscal year 21. The school department's budget funded with general fund resources, 71.4 million dollars for fiscal year 21. Their employee benefits for fiscal year 21 are estimated to cost 10.9 million dollars for a total funding of 82 million. That's about 60% of all of the general fund operating budget costs for all departments. So the allocation still holds true today after about 15 years of following this practice. We removed benefits from the individual operating department budgets, uh, a few years ago. Uh, this was a recommendation we received from our comprehensive financial advisory committee, and it was something that we felt strongly about because it gives us better management control over fixed costs, especially employee benefits and health insurance, and it provides for administrative efficiencies over those, uh, co- debt cost area and bunches. Um, so, any questions on the 60/40 revenue sharing policy? That's a little bit of the history about how we developed it, and it still holds today. If you look at just the school department budgets, uh, school department's, uh, direct operating budget, it's about 64% of all operating budget costs.
Questions from councilors? Uh, Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you're- you're saying the, are those assumptions are still valid, um, with regard to the revenue sharing? Mr. Mill?
Yes, we- yes, when we add the employee benefits to the operating budgets, it still comes out 60/40.
And that's, uh, that's, the- it's capped at a million dollars, um, the, um, allocation is?
Uh, you mean that the new growth from new growth?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we- we- we try to limit the, any new growth, uh, if new growth exceeds a million dollars, we try to limit allocating it, the first million to the operating budget, and then divide the balance of the capital program. So we have to live within two and a half percent plus a million dollars in new growth to build the operating budgets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I see no other questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, moving into the next area of policy that I wanted to cover is the fund balance policy. Um, here's a 10-year history on our fund balance and the change in growth. Um, another term that you often hear for this is free cash. Um, that's free cash sitting in the town's treasury at the end of year, free of all encircuses against it. And we can use this to set, uh, or to balance our operating capital budgets in the subsequent year. Um, so from fiscal year 2011, we had a balance of 10.7 million dollars. We're anticipating a balance of over 18 million dollars to be certified at the end of this year. Uh, with the practices that we put in place during fiscal year 20, we're estimating that we generated about 6.9 million dollars, which is one of the highest years, or even the highest year that we've had in revenue gener- surplus generation over the past 10 years. But we've strategically using this. We- we use a portion of the reserves on the annual to fund our operating budgets first, first of all, but we don't over-rely upon them. We want to make sure that we generate at least equal or more than what we're going to use to balance the operating and capital budgets. When we find that we're generating more than what we're using to balance those budgets, we have taken those excess reserves. We did it in 2011, 2013, 2016, and in 2018, and we've put additional funding into the capital trust fund to augment our capital program. Knowing that we have a long list of capital projects, um, outstanding, we want to try to add as much money to that capital trust fund as we can, we can continue with improving the town's assets. Here's what the- and then we share those assets, uh, their fund balance between, uh, the municipal departments and the school departments, depending upon how it gets generated. Um, we take the previous year's balance, we deduct from it any portion that was used to balance the respective operating budget and the capital budget for those particular areas, then any returned appropriations from those departments go back to that savings account. This is what I referred to the other day as the prevent the use it or lose it mentality. For example, if the school department didn't, we didn't credit their savings account back with 1.1 million dollars, the likelihood is that they're going to not adhere to strategic spending decisions and try to use that 1.1 million dollars at the end of the school year, um, as opposed to putting it in a savings account and then making strategic spending. And that goes for any department. And then we, any of the excess revenue that we return, as well as the fixed cost appropriations that we return, we split on a separate. And we always make, make sure that we maintain 4% council reserve, which is your town, town council fund policy reserve. We keep 4% of the operating budget aside. And the third one for area non-proceeding events, which is about $7 million. Use of either these savings accounts or the council's reserve requires town council approval. Can't use those without approval. Any questions?
Councilors, questions and comments to Director Milne, please? Okay, so again, what the director and the management is asking is, are we comfortable with continuing how we've been doing business basically at this point so they can continue planning for the, the budget formation? Now, I believe that we were talking about having a possible special meeting of the town council to review budget, maybe at the end of October. Am I correct in saying that?
I, I, my request was a workshop with council to begin the discussion on the comprehensive water management plan. I believe working with leadership on a weekly basis and as time allows, we'll begin to introduce the subject matter immediately following, you know, this review, and then we'd like to schedule that. My thought would be your second meeting in October, but certainly we are available if you want to hold a special meeting dedicated solely to this topic. We, we thought that that would allow for time and focus, you know, on this very important and time, time-sensitive issue.
So councilors, your thoughts on whether we would want to have, you know, kind of a workshop embedded in our second meeting in October? And/or would we want to have a special meeting suggested towards the end of October, like the 29th of October? As a special workshop on just this, the financial planning? Any of your thoughts? Councilor Bogan, please? Councilor Bogan?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I had to unmute. I'm certainly not looking to unnecessarily add anything to the calendar, but I think the subject matter warrants its own isolated attention, so I would be in favor of a special meeting.
I would concur with Councilor Bogan on that.
Okay, and if we did an October 29th, that would be the last Thursday in October. And so we, that would be a workshop or a special meeting of the town council? How would that work?
Mr. President, I would recommend it be a special meeting so we can come up with clear direction for the management with votes by the council on, on these policy recommendations.
Okay, so that, that would be also open to the public? Would we have a regular agenda, or would we just specially work on this project?
It would just be this item.
This item, okay. If there's any, councilors, and we, we recognize that your, your schedule may not allow everybody to attend, but unless there's a an objection voiced right now, we, we're going to plan on October 29th, a special meeting, and this is going to be for the finances of our comprehensive water management plan. Any comments? Okay, so we, we'll move in that direction, all right, with everyone. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that satisfactory to Director Milne and town manager?
Yes. Yes, we appreciate that, and we will probably prepare documents in advance, share them with you, be available for discussion leading up to it individually, and then collectively we can come together. And, you know, I think that we moved through actually some very complicated policy tonight relative to preparing the 2022 budget. And I want to thank Director Milne for having prepared that information ahead of time to help us.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Very, very well done, Director Milne. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. A council clock?
Yes, I was wondering if Director Milne's slides can be available to us for review?
Yes, I will send them out to everyone this evening.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay. There is now 40 minutes of 10. Can we take a 10-minute break, a 10-minute break? Then we'll come back, and then we're going to dive into the orders of the day. Thank you very much for all of your participation. Have a nice break. Thank you.
Deep inside me, there is this song. I'd like to sing it for you, if you'd like to too. It's a happy song, one that's filled with love. From the inner worlds where this song has gone. Soul playing all of the blues where it sounds as true. This song comes to you with all that joy.
So we're going to start again?
You're all set, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I would ask Madam Vice President to please act on the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to accept the meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2020 is presented.
Second.
We have a first and we have a second. Counselor Shaughnessy, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Snapp.
Yeah, I'd have just a question. I think that Janet did a great job capturing all the different amendments we had in the minutes. But at the end of the meeting, I believe we continued a number of the orders or the items till the next meeting. And at least the way I'm reading this, that is not what is said.
We actually didn't.
Twenty twenty-one dash oh one twelve?
No, we didn't, we didn't continue the items. The only item we continued, we opened and continued the public hearing.
Okay.
And the other items, we just, we didn't need to do that because they didn't involve a public hearing. So we're treating them as new business because we never got to them.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. Just wanted to clear them.
Thank you, thank you for that observation, Counselor Snapp. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Well, I have a question, Counselor Hebert.
I'm sorry, Counselor Clark, please.
Very much. It looks like on page two, there's a typo in referring to town manager Ellis instead of L. So there's two instances.
Counselor Clark, without hearing you clearly, could you please repeat that for the benefit of Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
It looks like on page two of the minutes, town manager Ellis is referred to as Ellis.
Okay.
In two paragraphs, or typo.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to ask for the approval now through roll call with the exception of the correction. Thank you very much, Counselor Clark, for picking that up.
Counselors, Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dag one?
Deborah, can you hear us, Deborah?
I think she, her phone was disconnected.
Oh, okay. She's, she's on screen, so we know where she is.
Raph Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinhilde?
Yes.
That would be eleven yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Dag one, yes.
Oh, here we go, Dag one, yes.
Great.
I'm back.
Thank you, thank you all, thanks. Awesome. Now I'd like to open it up for communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondence and announcements and anything from our liaison. Counselor Levek?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give a shout out to the owners of the daily paper, Aaron and Samantha Webb, who, over the weekend, in honor of nine eleven, did a first responders breakfast. And I believe it was something like three eggs, three pancakes, three bacon, three sausage and a cup of coffee, fifteen dollars. And 100% of the proceeds went to Kids Day, that's put on by the municipal police department and the different fire districts. First responders, the fire trucks and all the different things, that's usually, it's a very fun event. And I've taken my kids to it many times and over the years. And so they raised fifteen hundred dollars for that and they issued the check, I believe, to Chief Son of Ben. Yeah, so anyway, I aspire, and so I just wanted to give them a shout out, kudos to them in the midst of COVID, trying to run a restaurant at two locations and they were still able to put something together that had some value to the community. So round of applause for them, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Levek, for that. Counselor Shaughnessy?
I just want to make a little announcement on behalf of the Council on Aging. There are three open seats on that board, so if any town residents are interested in getting involved, they can contact me, they can contact Donna Marie at the Adult Youth and Community Center, or they can contact the new president of that board, who's John Jobe. But I just wanted to let people know that there is an opportunity there. And I'm happy to say that board is up and running, two meetings in now and all is going well.
Thank you very much, Counselor Shaughnessy. And I also believe that anyone interested could also contact directly to our administrator Cindy Lovell, right? Yeah. Thank you. Counselor Cullen?
Yes, I just wanted to share a COVID story. My family was going to Barcelona in March, we canceled on March thirteenth when they shut Spain down, basically. And I canceled all reservations, I was refunded every dime from Norwegian Air, everyone except hotels.com, which gave me a runaround, it was for three hundred and fifty dollars for a one night stay in Barcelona. But it just sent me to the moon and back that I couldn't get there only because of a pandemic, otherwise I would have been there, I promise you. And so I just persisted and I went to the AG's office, I went to the website and I filled out the form, it took me two minutes to fill out the form. A week later, I got a phone call from the AG's office saying, we're looking into it. I couldn't believe it, I figured I'd be one of a million. And three days ago, I got an email saying that they were refunding me the full three hundred and fifty-one thirty-seven and that they had come to, you know, whatever agreement they had. And I just think in this day and age, when everyone's thinking government isn't working for them and everybody's suspect and everyone is skeptical and everything else, I just think it's important that we know that the AG's office is really the office of people and it really helped us out, it was a good thing, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Awesome, congratulations, very good, super. Okay. Based on Counselor Cullen's comments the other day on preparedness as counselors, when new counselors come on, you are given a three ring binder with a ton of information in it. But and then also the town clerk, as well as our administrator, tries to work with you to have a session. And I know you're all very, very busy, so it's hard to take advantage of that opportunity. But I know that the town clerk, Madam Clerk, as well as our administrator are working together to try to come up with a simplified little program that would assist you. Madam Clerk will work on this when the election is over, when she's out of break, in order to just kind of facilitate basic information. But it does, just so that you all know, we have a wonderful administrator who can answer 99%, if not better, of every question that you're going to have. And if she doesn't have an answer, she will get that answer for you. So please do work more closely with our administrator. If you're working on a project, you have a question, you know, go through our administrator. And Cindy is happy to help you and she sometimes can take care of the situation. If it's a constituent situation, she can make the phone call for you to the appropriate department to get that taken care of. And then she creates a spreadsheet, she takes your issue and she follows up with that. And then when it gets resolved in that spreadsheet, she puts a resolve to the problem so we can keep track of any kind of things that are open. But please know that one of the best assets that you have is working with our administrator. And then a font of information is with everyone who has held positions in the town. Any of the chairs of our committees and any of our past presidents, vice presidents are always there to help any of us with any of our questions. So I couldn't do what I do if I wasn't getting the assistance that I have from both the administrator and past presidents and vice presidents. Just, just trying to help you out to be the best counselors that we possibly can be. Thank you very much. And thank you to Counselor Cullen in bringing up that point of, you know, how do we train, how do we get to be better counselors? Thank you very much. I also am going to be looking into what other elected, you know, and the cities are a little bigger than we are, but I'm going to find out why, how do they function? Do they meet on a weekly basis or do they meet every, every two weeks like we do? Just to kind of see if there's anything we can do to become more efficient. I'm not trying to look for more meetings, just trying to see how we get more efficient. Okay, if there's nothing else in communications, we're going to move to orders of the day. Wonderful, seeing none, thank you very much. I'm going to, so this is old business, open for a public hearing and this is a roll call of two thirds. And I'm going to ask Counselor Steinhilde to read into the orders of the day, item number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine. Counselor Steinhilde?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine, open the public hearing appropriation of loan order in the amount of eight million five hundred thousand for the purpose of funding the solids handling upgrades construction project as outlined in the fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan as written. This is the roll call, two thirds vote.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second, thank you very much. I believe that, actually, this is a heavy night for our Director of Public Works, Director Santos. I have a lot of items tonight, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, good evening, Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. Solids handling building at the water pollution control plant was built in 1990 and has reached the end of its design life. The building, the associated processes and thickened sludge disposal practices were evaluated as part of a 2014 CIP request. Project was put on hold to ensure that future flows identified in the comprehensive wastewater management plan would be accounted for while designing this project. Now complete, the evaluation recommends a full scale renovation of the building and equipment in order to extend the useful life of the facility for another 20 to 30 years. The solids handling building is critical to the wastewater treatment process, acting as the gut of the wastewater treatment facility by pumping and processing sludge from a variety of sources. The building handles up to 12 million gallons of septicage, 1 million gallons of grease and 11 million gallons of wastewater sludge per year. Because of the corrosive and abrasive nature of the work carried out in the building, the condition and the equipment in this building is degrading rapidly. General obligation bonds will be issued to fund the project. The repayment of the loan will be included in the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund annual operating budget. And the first payment will, on the loan, will be due in fiscal year 2022 and there'll be no impact on the fiscal year 2021 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Santos. Santos. We, this is open for a public hearing. Sarah, do we have anybody for public hearing?
There's no one for public hearing.
Thank you very much. And Lynn, anybody on the phones?
Mr. President, there's no one on the phones, thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I will now open it up for counselors for discussion of questions or comments, Director Santos. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve item number twenty twenty-one.
Mr. President, you need to close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second, we have one and a second and seeing none, we close the public hearing. Do we have to have a vote on that?
I don't think you need to take a vote as long as no counselor objects to that.
Okay. Any objections, seeing none, thank you very much. So Counselor Shaughnessy?
Thank you, President Hebert, I just have one quick question for Director Santos. That final sentence, it's estimated the repayment would impact rates by 12%. When you say that, is that rates of the current people who are soured in a 12% increase?
Yes, but it's, the way we manage our debt service is over a long period of time, so there won't be a 12% raise in rates.
Okay.
We use our reserves to balance that. And so in the last couple of years, the rate increase has been about 3%.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Mr. President?
Madam Vice President?
I do have one question. Well, is this project eligible for water protection funds?
We will be funding it through SRF and I believe it will be eligible for the new water protection fund, but Mr. Ellis is the most expert on that, so I'll let him opine on that if he's so inclined.
This would be an SRF eligible project. The trust doesn't have the regulations in place yet. That's why I was hoping for the September 22nd meeting because we've got some deadlines in October if they're going to administer the next round of projects. So to be determined if, if we will get, we will get SRF, I'm assuming it'll be 0% 30 year. I don't know about a principal subsidy, but we never do until the project is, is in really like the final regulatory stage, a regulatory agreement with the state. And then on top of that, if the, if the Cape and Islands Wastewater Trust Fund Board establishes regulations, this may be eligible for additional subsidy. If not, next year's project.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so. Now I will entertain a motion to approve item twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine.
They're moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. So that, that was a first by Counselor Bogan, a second by Madam Vice President. Okay, so this is going to be a roll call and this is to approve the item twenty twenty-one zero zero nine for expenditure of eight million five hundred thousand dollars. Madam Clerk?
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dag one?
Yes.
Raph Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinhilde?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That ends our old business and now on to new business. This is item number twenty twenty-one dash zero one two. I would ask Counselor Shaughnessy to please read into the record of the day, orders of the day.
Thank you, President Hebert. This is new business may be acted on by a roll call majority. Item number twenty twenty-one dash zero one two, a resolve to accept the grant of an electric easement from Festival of Hyannis LLC for electric service for new traffic signal at the intersection of Addicks Lane and Wilkins Lane. of Addicks Lane and Wilkins Lane.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So again, we have Director Santos. Thank you.
Thank you. As part of a project funded by a MassWorks grant, the Department of Public Works will be installing a new traffic signal at the intersection of Addicks Lane and Wilkins Lane in Hyannis. The nearest power source is the utility pole, which is located on private property owned by Festival of Hyannis LLC. The Department of Public Works staff approached Festival of Hyannis LLC about securing an easement to power the traffic signal. Festival of Hyannis LLC has agreed to gift an easement to the town. The traffic signal will improve the safety of the intersection and has been designed to accommodate anticipated future growth in the vicinity. The easement will be acquired at no cost to the town. Additionally, the construction of the traffic signal, including the electrical services, is being funded by the MassWorks grant.
Thank you, Director Santos. Any questions from any councilors to Director, please? Seeing none. I would ask, entertain a motion that we vote to approve item number 2021-012.
So moved.
So we have, we have a first and we have a second. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you. Counselors, Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapp Grissette?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, are you recording who does first and second? No? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be helpful if that was the case. Thanks. Okay. Item number 2021-013, I would ask Councilor Starr to read that into the orders of the day, please.
This is item number 2021-013. This is new business, acceptance of a fiscal year 2021, Mass Trails Grant in the amount of $180,950 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for design of the Cape Cod Rail Trail. This may be acted upon with a roll call majority vote.
Second.
First and second. Thank you very much. And again, Director Santos, please.
Thanks. This project supports design and permitting costs associated with the 12-foot-wide shared use path known as the Cape Cod Rail Trail Phase III, which will extend the trail from its current terminus in Yarmouth to Mary Dunn Road in Barnstable Village. The grant funds apply to the Town of Barnstable's share of the design and permitting law. This project will link the Town of Barnstable to the existing Cape Cod Rail Trail from Wellfleet to Yarmouth and to future segments that will one day create a continuous path from the Cape Cod Canal to Barnstable. This connection will offer safe multimodal travel for residents and visitors to local businesses, local lodging, shopping, employment, and recreational facilities via existing and future links. Funding for construction of the path is on the federal fiscal year 2023 Transportation Improvement Program. The funding match required for this grant program has already been met through Community Preservation Act fund. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Any questions to the Director? Council Starr, please.
Yeah. So, Mr. Santos, does that include any parking? Is there a parking lot involved with that, or?
There'll be a small parking area on Mary Dunn Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that we approve item 2021-013.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is to approve the item 202021013. Madam Clerk, please a roll call.
Thank you. Counselors, Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapp Grissette?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask Councilor Bogan to kindly read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-014, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 2021-014 is new business, may be acted upon upon a roll call majority. It's a resolution to approve acceptance of a fiscal year 2021 Coastal Pollutant Remediation Grant in the amount of $173,255.50 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for construction of stormwater improvements on South County Road as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. And Director Santos again, please.
The town was awarded this coastal pollutant remediation grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Coastal Zone Management is an interagency initiative of the Commonwealth led by the Governor's Office, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. CCM seeks to improve water quality of the state's coastal waterways by implementing pollution remediation projects throughout the Commonwealth. This project supports bidding and construction costs associated with a series of four vegetated biofiltration swales along South County Road and Marson's Mill, which have been designed to treat the first one inch of stormwater run prior to overflowing into the town's drainage system. This project is a continuation of the town's efforts to improve stormwater quality within the Three Bays Watership. The grant funds apply to the Town of Barnstable's share of the construction cost. Design and permitting was already completed as part of the fiscal year 20 grant received by the town. In fact, this is the fourth year of grants that we have received on this project. The funding match required for this grant program is being met through previously awarded SNAP grant funds already received and accepted by the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions, concerns, comments? Madam Vice President, Vice President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, is this project one that is being done in cooperation with APCC?
Yes, it is.
And is this, this affects which water body? Is it Warren's Cove, or where are we talking about?
Well, it's on the South County Road near Route 28. On the east side, there are wetlands in there that eventually make their way down into the Three Bay system. So it's not a direct discharge.
Okay. I think we may have lost Council President Ebert. Is there any more discussion on this item? Council Clark?
Very much, Council Vice President Rapp Grissette. I do want to congratulate Director Santos and his team for securing that grant four years ago.
Yes, I just, again, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to know, did we receive this grant last year as well?
Yes, we did. This is the fourth year that we've received this grant. In fact, the total to date is over $650,000 towards stormwater remediation in the Three Bays Watership over the four years.
Thank you.
Apologies. The Council President will rejoin us shortly. Any further questions on this item? If not, I'd like a motion to vote on item 2021014.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Counselors, Rapp Grissette?
Yes.
Ebert? Oh, sorry. Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
And that's it. Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Let's see, as I was supposed to read this in, I'll defer to Councilor Bogan. If you'd read item 2021015, please.
Sure. Item 2021-015 is new business, again, may be acted upon upon a roll call majority. It's a resolution to accept a 2020 Massachusetts dredging grant in the amount of $500,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the Dead Neck Sampson's Island dredging project as written.
Second. Mr. Santos?
Thank you. Town of Barnstable has been awarded a $500,000 Massachusetts dredging grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the execution of the third and final phase of the Dead Neck Sampson's Island dredging project. The Massachusetts dredging grant provides construction phase funding coastal communities for saltwater dredge projects. Grants are competitively awarded with a focus on shovel-ready projects that contribute to the economic significance, public safety, recreational value, and our coastal resiliency of the Commonwealth's coastal harbor. Dredging is scheduled to begin in September. In fact, the project started this week, and the dredging itself will begin on Monday. The third and final phase of the Dead Neck Sampson's Island dredging project will include the dredging of approximately 45,000 cubic yards of coastal dune and sand from the western terminus of Dead Neck Sampson's Island adjacent to the Kewett Bay Channel. Possible county dredge is scheduled to begin this dredging, as I mentioned, next Monday. And the Massachusetts dredging grant will fund 50% of the construction cost of the project. The Massachusetts dredging grant requires a 50% match from the town, which will be provided from fiscal year 21 channel dredging program fund. As I mentioned, this is the third and final phase. In this grant, comes to $1.5 million in state grants that we've been provided for this project over the life of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from counselors? I will just comment that phases one and two have made a remarkable difference in the navigational enhancements of that area. And I, and I hope water quality will be improved as well. So I'm, I'm glad that this is going forward. Any other counselors? Have a motion to vote on item 2021015, please.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapp Grissette?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you. Counselor Steinheber, if you would read item 2021016, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is item 2021-016, resolve to accept the grant of a roadway improvements easement from Cape Cod Hospital for new traffic signal at the intersection of Addicks Lane and Wilkins Lane, Hyannis, as written.
Mr. Santos?
Thank you. As part of a project funded by a MassWorks grant, the Department of Public Works will be installing a new traffic signal at the intersection of Addicks Lane and Wilkins Lane. Wilkins Lane is a private road owned by Cape Cod Hospital. Construction of the traffic signal requires installation of traffic detectors, a traffic signal pole with mast arm, electric conduit, various excavation and repaving within the private roadway layout of Wilkins Lane. The Department of Public Works staff approached Cape Cod Hospital about securing an easement to install this equipment within the roadway layout. Hospital agreed to gift an easement to the town. Traffic signal will improve safety of the intersection and has been designed to accommodate anticipated future growth in the vicinity. This easement will be acquired at no cost to the town. Additionally, the construction of the traffic signal is being funded by the MassWorks.
Thank you. Any questions from counselors? Seeing none, I take a motion to vote on item 2021016.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please. Counselors, Neary?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Rapp Grissette?
Yes.
And Mr. Ebert still not with us. And Levek?
Yes.
Thank you. That's 11 yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of your support this evening.
Thank you, Dan. Let's see, Counselor Dagwone, if you'd read item 2021017, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is item 2021017, the new business approval of a contract and execution for Mark S. Ellis as the Barnstable Town Manager. This item may be voted upon through a roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's see, perhaps Counselor Steinheber can give the resolve on this, please.
Sure. First off, I just want to thank the Contract Committee members, Council Cullen and Council Dagwone, that worked with me to put this together. We met a couple of times, as the council is aware. We met as a full council executive session in August to review the contract. And the full council was supportive of moving forward. This particular contract, right now, the current manager's contract ends June 30, 2022. So this is a four-year extension, which effectively will be a five-year contract that starts July 1 of 2021. That's obviously the main change is the dates. The other item of note, and give the town manager some unselfish credit here. Back when we first entered the COVID phase, you know, the manager had directed that there weren't going to be any COLAs, you know, with the employees under his purview, including his directors, and he voluntarily passed on his as well, which he had an automatic one written into his contract, but he did not take that for this year. We did end up kind of codifying that in the contract, that the manager's COLA would be tied directly to what, you know, employees, the directors under him would get. So if it's zero one year, the manager is also getting zero. But I want to applaud the manager for really doing that on his, on his own accord. I think it speaks a lot to, you know, character. But those are the two major changes in the contract. And again, I think a lot of us feel the same way. We're very lucky to have Mark Ellis as our town manager. I've had the opportunity to work with him when he was assistant town manager as well, but been vice president, president, fellow counselor. So I've worked with him a variety of roles, just really an asset to the town, and we're very lucky to have him. So I'm happy that, you know, we have the opportunity to extend him, especially with all the stuff that's before us. We have, we have some very heavy lifts ahead of us in having a professional like We have, we have some very heavy lifts ahead of us, and having a professional like Mark L.'s at the head of, head of the town here is going to be a valuable asset as we embark on, you know, wastewater sewer expansion and many other items. So hats off to you, Town Manager.
I, I see, Madam Clerk, that our president is back with us, so I will defer the rest of this item to him.
Thank you for keeping the meeting going, Madam Vice President. This computer station decided to up, upgrade, so they shut me down, but we're back in business. Thank you very much for your patience, and thank you for carrying on. So if there are any comments from any of the counselors? And, and again, Counselor Clark.
Thank you very much, Counsel President Bieber. And I do echo Counselor Stein Hilber's accolades for our town. I do want to say on the contract agreement on Cape Street, there's a typo under benefit. It refers to Town Manager, Manager, I'm forgetting one of the things. That was, um, correct. But thank you very much.
Did, did we catch that? What was the correction? I didn't catch it.
M A N, under benefit, section five, made on the town, M A N G E R, instead of, is printed instead of manager.
Understood, I'll, I'll fix the typo.
Got it? Okay. Thank you, thank you very much for picking up on that, Counsel Clark. And I would, I would reiterate appreciation of Counselors Stein Hilber and Counselor Cullum and Counselor Dagewan for your fine work on that contract. And I would now call for the, obtain a motion to approve item 2021-017, manager's contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second, thank you very, very much. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors, Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yeah.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Bieber.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Just a point of, point of information, Mr. President. I would just note that the administration should also just make sure all the dates are correct as the document is prepared for signature now that the council is ratified.
Yes, sir, the first date will be changed to today's.
Thank you very much. All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to Town Manager.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. If I might for one second, it's a real privilege to serve as the Town Manager in Barstville. I greatly appreciate your support and our community's support. I couldn't do it without my family's support and certainly my coworkers. I mean, I, I feel like this vote of confidence in our management goes right down to boots on the ground. I couldn't do it without every single person I work with every day. So it's greatly appreciated, I consider it an honor, and I will always do my best to serve Barstville. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Good job. Thanks. Okay. I would, I would now ask that we move on to, and ask Counselor Levek to please read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-018.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, first read. We are referring to a second reading on 10/1/2020. This is item number 2021-018, order to accept Town of Barstville's amended application and the Community Preservation Committee's vote to approve the amount of $320,000 in the Community Preservation Open Space Recreational Funds for Falcon Road Conservation Restriction to be held by Barstville Land Trust, as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. We need a roll call on this, no discussion, it's just a first read to be taking place on October 1st of item number, so this to approve that for item number 2021-018.
So moved.
We have a first, we have a second, thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Counselors, Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yeah.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Bieber.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask now that Counselor Schnapp would read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-019, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, first read, refer to a second reading on October 1st, 2020. Item number 2021-019, order to accept Town of Barstville's amended application and the Community Preservation Committee's vote to approve the amount of $500,000 in Community Preservation Open Space Recreation Funds, 30 Wakeby Road Conservation Restriction to be held by Barstville Land Trust. Second.
Thank you. We have a first and we have a second. Again, so this is to approve item number 2021-019. Madam Clerk, please, roll call.
Mr. President, you're not approving it, you're referring it to a second reading.
Thank you. Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Counselors. Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yeah.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Bieber.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. I would now ask Counselor Starr to read into the orders of the day, item number 2021-120.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is number 2021-120, new business, may be acted upon with a roll call majority. Resolved to endorse the actions of the Town Manager to prepare the application to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for designation as a green community.
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second.
Mr. President, I move that we table this item and ask the Town Manager to report to us later in this year once he's convened with the state on his discussions and got the necessary information.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Madam Vice President.
I, I'd like to ask Mark if he are comfortable with us tabling this item.
Yes, I am. And I will report back as soon as I have additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr, please.
I'm not, what, what, are we asking him to move forward with the applica, is he moving forward now with the application?
No, we'd be tabling this for now.
But he's moving, still moving forward with the application?
I'll let the Town Manager speak, but he's continuing his discussions with the state on our approach to satisfy the fifth criteria.
That's correct. That's my understanding. I will continue relative to our discussions with the state on our alternative approach. That's, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to report back to you, basically following the outline that David Anthony had provided earlier.
Okay.
Counselor, Counselor Bogan, please.
You're muted, you're muted, David.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I guess I would add that consistent with the president's suggestion earlier, I think a workshop would be helpful. I certainly appreciate Counselor Stein Hilber's reference to the fact that this has been discussed several times. We do have four new counselors, basically a third of our council, who have not been part of those discussions. So I think it would be helpful. And even if that included, as Counselor Stein Hilber suggested, representatives of either of the viewpoints, both the developer viewpoint as well as the, I'll call it the green viewpoint, I think that would be helpful, certainly to this counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. So what would be the, the role of the council of when and how would we do this workshop? Would it be a regular scheduled meeting? And how much time do we need to pull this together? Any suggestions?
Mr. President, if I may, perhaps that's a discussion for leadership and the manager, and we could report back to the council whether or not it could be a, an independent workshop or a part of a council meeting.
So in, in independent workshop, we would invite all counselors to participate? Would that be open to the public? How would that work?
Yeah, it would have to be open to the public, it would be a meeting of the council.
Okay. And do we need to have quorum at that, that workshop?
Do you do any deliberation?
Yes, I mean, if you're deliberating, which you would be, I mean.
Okay, so it's, it's not just seeking information, we would be coming out with some, some vote on that?
No, I mean, as long as you all want the ability to speak, you, you would have to notice it as a meeting.
Okay. All right.
That's correct, and if I could just add, if it's simply a presentation and an educational workshop of sorts, then that is not the same as a meeting subject to the open meeting law, where you wouldn't be deliberating or voting on anything.
Okay.
But I, you all want to engage. I mean, if you are just sitting there for a presentation, that, that's different.
Okay. Yeah, so we would be engaging, so we would have a regular meeting, okay, open to the public. Very good. Before we, we move on that, I do want to thank Ms. Sullivan and Commissioner Florence and Director Anthony for staying with us and working through this. We appreciate your time and your effort here, so we greatly appreciate that. So. So we, we won't be voting.
The motion on the floor is to table this item and have the Town Manager report back to us.
Okay. All right. So we are not tabling it to any time certain, we're just tabling it at this point. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a first on that?
You have a first and a second.
We have a second.
First and a second, okay, thank you very much.
Ask for a vote on it.
Okay, so I'm asking for a vote that we table item number 2021-120. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yeah.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Bieber.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
No.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
No.
10 yes, 2 no, it passes.
Okay, thank you very, very much, Madam Clerk. So that brings us to the end of the orders of the day. Our next regular scheduled meeting is October 1st of 2020. We ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, the final roll call of the night, please.
Wait, point of information, who won the bet between Levek and, Counsel Levek and Counselor Bogan then?
Are you trying to stretch it out so that he wins?
I didn't know he was going to be the winner, now that you mentioned it.
Actually chose, we just said 11 was the overall.
So, so it's a draw, nobody wins, nobody loses?
I'm about to filibuster, is all I know, I'm going. I'm doing it while it's still legal.
I'd vote no, I would vote no to extend the meeting past 11.
Thank you, Counsel Cullum, for leaving us laughing, we appreciate it very, very much.
Counselors. Bogan.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yeah.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Bieber.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody's participation, wishing you a wonderful evening. And I'm glad you're all home safe, and thank you very, very much, have a good night now.